Councilmember Lam, we're ready. Okay, it is five o'clock. So I will call this special meeting of the Mepita City Council of April 2nd, 2025 to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comments may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over fifty languages with Wordly, accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business, City Clerk Guzetta, please take roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal?
Here.
Councilmember Chua?
Here.
Councilmember Lam?
Here.
Councilmember Leanne?
Here.
Mayor Montano?
And I am here. And if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Would anyone like to start it off? Okay, we have Vice Mayor, ready?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so now let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on the agenda item listed on this agenda only. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. So public forum will be limited to two minutes. Are there any speakers, City Clerk?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the public? Then we'll move on to announcements of conflict of interest from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest relating to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal?
I have none.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lam?
None.
Councilmember Leanne?
None.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none.
I further ask the mayor and the members of the Mepita City Council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal?
None.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lam?
None.
Councilmember Leanne?
None.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none, thank you for that. And now moving on to the Mepita City Code of Conduct. Would anyone like to read that? And we'll have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Mepita City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issues, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with its code of conduct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. So now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Okay, so it was a motion by Councilmember Chua and seconded by Vice Mayor Barbara Deal. And let's go ahead and take the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal? Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none. And so now we're on the agenda items, so City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Although we were here yesterday for our regular meeting and we're back tonight for a special meeting, this special meeting to talk about the budget, both a follow-up for the capital improvement program as well as the operating budget. And just by way of introduction, we met, the council last met back on February eighteenth, February eighteenth, and that was our first budget study session. And at that study session, it was our first time to talk to the council as part of our ongoing or annual budget process. We shared with the council that night a ten-year forecast, and the forecast showed a deficit, not only for the current fiscal or the next fiscal year, the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, but also a very stubborn structural deficit that has been around the city for a while. And we received some clear feedback and direction from the council that you would like to have staff take a very critical eye to the budget for the coming year and future years so that we can begin to close that structural deficit. And that will take some time and some effort. And, but we wanted to come back with you tonight and we're prepared. As we have, we, the City Manager's Office and the finance team have worked with all of the department directors, met with them several different times, had lots of discussions. We've had briefings with each of you as well. We've been exploring costs, we've been looking at revenues. Just today, yesterday, we instituted through the City Manager's Office a hiring free, what we're calling a temporary hiring freeze. There was a memo that went to the council today about that. It's more of a strategy for how the City Manager's Office will work with HR and finance to manage very carefully the hiring process while we're going through and looking at the budget and looking at all of our expenditures and what's to come next. So we want to be careful as we do that. So on the eighteenth, we received some other direction that will also be discussed in the presentation tonight by our Finance Director, Lucy Capressi Howe, who will be talking about the operating budget. Before we get to her presentation, we will, at the council's request, we have brought back the capital improvement program as well, and we'll be talking about that tonight. The two are somewhat related, but they're separate processes. We, it will be good in this special study session to have a look at both. And so we're back tonight. What you'll see in Lucy's presentation, we have an updated forecast. As I mentioned, we've done a lot of work over the past few weeks, really the past month, to bring back to you a strategy for addressing that deficit for the next fiscal year without using the reserves. The council made very clear, although the city does have a budget stabilization reserve and some other funds are available, we felt like there might be other ways to address that deficit, and there are. Lucy will also go over those and what we have done, and that will be outlined in the presentation. In the briefings with the council, we also heard that it would be helpful for the council to have an overview of the schedule and the strategy for this year's budget process. And we've broken that up into some phases and we'll share some details with that, with you tonight about that as well. We are required to have a balanced budget by the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. And so Phase One of that process, which we'll spend most of the time talking about tonight, will bring you a balanced budget that the council can adopt. And then every year, we also bring forward to the council a list of proposals for, I think of it as new spending. And that, that will be in Phase Two, and that will be part of, that will come in a month or two when we, once we get through Phase One and have the balanced budget adopted. And then there will be actually what we'll call Phase Three, which is a much longer process where we take them, bringing us full circle, where we take a much more critical look at the overall budget over multiple years to finally address that structural deficit. And I don't know, I'm always an optimist, but I see light at the end of the tunnel. You have a great team here that's working on not only this year's budget, but on that longer-term structural deficit. And I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to tackle that. But for tonight, well, I'm going to turn the time, I think, first over to Lee Hawk, is teed up to give us a presentation, to give the council a presentation on the capital improvement program and entertain questions and comments and feedback about that. For that process, after tonight's feedback and direction from the council, we'll, we'll continue to do some additional work on that capital improvement program. And then when he's done and we've had our conversation, then we'll move over to the operating budget, and that will take the bulk of our time this evening. So with that, Mayor, if you're good, we'll turn the time over to Lee Hawk for his presentation.
I just want to mention that, you know, we've had a structural deficit for quite a while. However, it was manageable, but times have changed. The federal government, the state, the county, it all has that domino effect. And we really need to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we are, making sure that our city is, has the services for the residents. So that's why we're making sure that we address this, because we don't want to start, we don't want to continue to kick the can down the road. So we really need to take the bull by the horns and start addressing this. And thank you for, for all staff for doing what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager, net. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Lee Haem, Public Work Division Managers of the Engineering Divisions, overseeing the design construction sections and administering the capital improvement program. Tonight, we will discuss the proposed fiscal year 2026, 2030 capital improvement program. Next slide, please. Today agenda, we will discuss the proposed capital improvement program budget, review of the previous council inquiry related to the CIP from, that was provided from February eleventh council study sessions, and have the council discussion and the recommendations. Next slide, please. The five-year capital improvement program that is brought forward tonight consists of one hundred forty-eight projects with the proposed budget of two hundred forty-five millions. This table show you the detailed breakdown of the estimated cost with the associate number for each project for each category. Next slide, please. Here is the summary of the proposed funding for each category in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, which will be effective starting July first. Staff recommend funding thirty-seven projects with an estimate budget amount of thirty-eight point seven millions. Next slide, please. In the next few slides, I will present the thirty-seven projects that are being recommended to be funded in these coming fiscal years. Each table will provide the project descriptions, recommended funding amount, and its funding sources. Here are the ten projects being recommended to be funded in the community category, which include three new projects. Majority of the funding is for the upkeep of the existing infrastructure. For example, the city building improvement projects, the funding request is for the replacement of the window at Public Works Police Department buildings, this police dispatch kitchen remodels, and the design of the aquatic system at Mepita's Sports Center. The funding recommended for the city building roof improvement is for the design of the roof rehabilitation at Public Works Police IT buildings. The current construction cost is estimated at one point two million, which is not funded at this time. And the last three projects involved are the new projects recommended to be added. The audiovisual system at the community center, senior center, and sports center have exceeded useful life and need for the replacement. The funding request is for the design of the system and the implementation at the community center. The funding and the implementations for the remaining facility will be requested in the future budget cycle. The end-user computer replacement project and the urban search and rescue vehicle projects will be covered into more detail at the later slide, which we will go over the schedule, funding requests, and its funding sources. Next slide, please. Here are the four projects in park category to be, recommend to be funded in the amount of three point eight millions. The planning phase for Metro Tango Park and the design phase for Senate Park Playground renovation will be completed this year. Staff recommend funding the next phase of these projects. Additionally, the design of the sports center bleachers and ADA improvement at Mepita Sports Center is complete, and staff is recommending funding the construction phase in the amount of one point five million, which is anticipated to start in twenty twenty-six. Next slide, please. Here are the nine projects recommended to be funded in the amount of sixteen point two million in street category. Eight projects are dedicated for the upkeep of the existing infrastructure, and one project is a new one. The funding recommended for South Mepita Boulevard Road extension is for the construction of the bridge across Penintinsha Creek and the road connection, which is anticipated to start in spring of twenty twenty-six. The funding for the street resurfacing project twenty twenty-six will resurface the Yellowstone Avenue, South Parkway Drive from Yosemite Drive to Yellowstone Avenue, and the residential street adjacent to South Parkway Drive. The only new project in this category is the Safe Street for All Improvement Project. The city received two point nine millions through the Safe Street and Road for All Grant Program with a local match requirement of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand for the planning, design, and implementation of bicycle and pedestrian safety enhancement along the school route within the city. Next slide, please. Here are the eight projects recommended to be funded in the amount of three point one million in water category. There are two new projects recommended to be added. Staff will start with the first phase of the fire flow improvement projects to upside the water main to meet the fire flow requirement as identified in the sewer, in the water master plan. The next project is the Urban Water Management Plan Update that is required to be updated every five years to support the city water supply long-term resource planning efforts. Next slide, please. The first table on this slide includes five sewer projects being recommended to be funded by Sewer Fund in the amount of six point two million. Majority of the funding is for the city contribution to the rehabilitations at the San Jose West Water Facility. One new project is being recommended. Staff will begin with the design of the first of the twelve phases to improve the sewer pipeline as identified in the sewer master plan. The second table include the only new project being recommended in the storm drain category in the amount of four point six million for the repair of the storm drain and sewer on Technology Drive. Next slide, please. These are the six projects that are being recommended to be funded by the General Government CIP Fund in the amount of two point four six million, which five of them are the existing projects that show on the first table, and the second table is for the new projects that are being recommended. Next slide, please. On February eleven, twenty twenty-five, staff represented the proposed budget for the capital improvement program, discussed city council referral and received feedback and direction from the city council. And today, we will review and provide update on several items that were discussed at last meeting that include the end-user computer replacement projects, urban search and rescue vehicle, and an update on the repair of the library elevators. Next slide, please. The computer replacement project established a proactive program to replace approximately seven hundred fifty-four computers over the next five years to ensure consistent upgrade, improved staff productivity, and enhanced securities of the city technology infrastructures. The industrial standard recommend replacing laptop every three to four years and desktop every four to five years. Staff recommend extending the replacement cycle by one additional year, setting the replacement for the laptop every five years and the desktop every six years. The total estimated cost for the replacement over the next five years is one point one five millions. Staff recommend replacing two hundred forty-five computers in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six in the estimated cost of three hundred and sixty thousand. Historically, the city have replaced the computer on an as-needed basis. The second table show the numbers of the computers that have replaced in the last four years. I also would like to point out the high numbers of the computer replacement in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, which was made possible saying to the APA funding allocated by the city council in twenty twenty-one. This funding allowed the city staff to replace significant amount of computers and keep the technologies as current as possible. However, relying on one-time funding is not a sustainable, sustainable approach. That is why the formal, the formal replacement cycle is needed. Next slide, please. This project provide the funding to purchase an urban search and rescue vehicle to be used by five departments in technical rescue incidents that include the confined space rescue, trench rescue, and structural collapse. The project will be funded by Equipment Replacement Fund in the amount of one point eight five million. The vehicle delivery is anticipated in twenty twenty-eight, and there will be no additional staff is required to operate this vehicle. Currently, five department operate one existing vehicle that were purchased in nineteen ninety-nine, and this vehicle been in operations for more than twenty-five years, which have already exceed the fifteen-year replacement standard as recommended by National Fire Protection Associations. This new vehicle will be able to accommodate all the special equipments, including earthquake response package, mobile toolbox, generator, chainsaw, and other equipment from the other thirty-five years old hazmat material response equipment. By consolidating this hazmat equipment into the new vehicle, the city will be able to decommissions the hazmat vehicle, resulting in over one million in cost saving on its replacements. Next slide, please. The next item is the update on the library elevators repairs and some additional security measure that staff is implementing. This contract for the repair was awarded in January twenty twenty-five in the amount of five hundred twenty-one thousand. Staff is planning to have the kick-out meeting this month and anticipate to complete all the work by September of twenty twenty-five. The city is currently waiting for the vendor to submit the bond before finalizing the agreement. The typical lead time for this elevator is approximately sixteen weeks. In additions, additional security measures will be implemented to address the vandalism concern. The city will have an unarmed onsite roaming guard from Monday through Thursday, eight PM to four AM, and Fridays through Sundays, six PM to four PM for six months to alleviate or minimize the vandalism. The cost for this service is approximately fifty thousand, which will be funded by Public Work Operating Budget. Staff is currently working with the vendor to finalize the contract, which should be complete in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. Staff recommend the city council to receive the presentations on the proposed capital improvement program and provide the direction to bring back for the adoptions.
Thank you, Lee Hawk. Assistant City Manager Matt Keno, briefly, I wanted to mention that Finance Director Lucy Capressi Howe will be covering the schedule for the operating budget process in the next presentation, and we expect and hope to bring back the capital budget for adoption at the same meeting as we bring back the operating budget for adoption, which will, would be sometime in May. And so I just wanted to state that, and we can talk more about the schedule moving forward, but I wanted to make you aware of that plan. And we're happy to take any questions now on the capital budget, or if you'd prefer, we can provide the operating budget presentation first and then take all the questions afterwards.
Does anyone have any questions on the presentation that was just done right now? Councilmember Lam? I have a couple of questions as well, so.
Yeah, um, let's see. The total budget for the seventy-seven project was thirty-eight point seven million. And out of that thirty-eight point seven million, how much from the general fund? And I assume the other funded by other means?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So if you can go to slide number ten. So part of, from that thirty-eight point seven millions, two point four six million is funded by General Government CIP Fund. Two point four six million is funded by General Government CIP, CIP Fund. It show on slide number ten.
Number ten?
That's from funds that are currently in the general government. Can you speak louder, because we can't hear you? Lee, thank you.
It's, it's existing general fund money that's already in the government, at General Government CIP. You're not asking for an actual transfer, a new transfer of funds this fiscal year.
That is correct.
Are you done, Mr. Councilmember Lam? Or you continuing?
Yeah, my next question on each category, or yeah. Do you have priorities? You just listed as projects. Are there priorities assigned to each one of the projects?
So basically, have been all the, are you talking about all the thirty-seven projects?
Well, the thirty-seven project is break down into different, what do you call it? Different categories. You have two, four, six, six different categories. And each category is the number of projects. And all of the number of projects do you assign priorities to them?
Lam, what, what pages, what slide is that one, so that we, they could put it up?
Okay, um, that's.
Slide number four, I believe.
That one, okay.
Yep, so Councilmembers, so basically, these thirty-seven projects are all the priority project that staff would like to recommend to move forward. And these thirty-seven projects will be handled by different departments. So Public Works will handle maybe ten of the projects. So public work will handle maybe 10 of the projects. And some of the projects will be handled by finance, by fire departments. So all of this will be the priority that we would like to move forward with.
Okay, for example, the community improvement, there are 10 projects. Do you assign which ones the higher priority and which ones the least?
So if I can add, Councilmember Lam. So during our process that we go through, starting in October, we do get number of requests. And during those requests, we do prioritize them. So what we brought forward today is the higher priority projects that we would like to fund. Now, each project kind of goes into its own category because it's funded by a certain funding source. So for an example, the sewer funds. So we're going to have roughly five projects that we want to bring up to as a priority that we would like to fund within that category. That's going to be funded by sewer. And then, you know, the same applies to water projects and street. So the priorities has to be, it gets allocated by the category. So that's, the priority of these projects is based on the funding available. And what we feel that we, as an entire city, can move forward with that, with fiscal year 26.
Okay.
So, anyone else have any questions? Okay, so I have, we have, Councilmember Lam?
Thank you, Mayor. Leha, for the 3.625 million dollars in grant of the gas tax for, and you said there's local match, can you share with us, what is the match? What's the dollar?
Thank you, councilmember. Are you talking about the SS4A grant? So the local mine is 725,000.
735. Okay. And the 1.5 for the bleachers and ADA improvements, is that at the high school?
That is at the Milpitas Sports Center.
Sports Center. And the library elevator, is it completed now?
No, it's not.
The slide was so fast, I couldn't read it all.
Right now, it's not. It is, the city is still waiting for the contractor to submit the bond so that we can finalize the agreement. And we expect to have the kick-out meeting this month. We expect to complete everything by September of 2025.
September, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Anyone else? We have Councilmember Chua.
On the new projects, can I have? Just kidding. Can I have, no, Daniel, please? You won, Daniel, you won.
He wants to speak for me, so that's fine with me. Yes, Councilmember.
You know what I'm going to ask you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you can read your mind.
Yeah. So you're asking for 380?
Yes.
360,000?
360, yes.
Replacement for 245 laptops and, and, what's the other one?
205 total, including laptop and.
Desktops and. Okay. Slide, what slide is it? I think the last one.
Put on slide 12, please.
We have 754 desktop and laptops. Do we have a complete inventory? If I ask you, do we have a complete inventory of the 700 desktops?
Yes, we do.
And the purchase date? So if I look in there, so these 245 laptops, iPads would be, would, when did we purchase this? 2020, that right?
So, yeah.
21.
So the 245, and so what we are projecting is five years replacement cycle for the laptops and the six-year replacement cycle for workstations because the laptops are exposed to more wear and tear. So it is kind of a combination. So 245 total that we are requesting to replace is, includes machines that are older than, laptops that are more than five years old and the desktops that are more than six years old. It's a combination.
Is, because it's a big hit, like for this budget cycle is 360, while 26, 27 is only 130. Is this, since this is feedback from the council, is there a way you can normalize it? What I mean by that is stagger the replacement? So it's lower this time? So it's more kind of normal, spread it out?
Yes, we can definitely do that. There will be some computers that will be over the, over its useful cycle after FY26. But we can definitely try to average it out across five years.
Yeah. I think that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
If you can find a way when you come back next time to normalize it so it's not a big hit for the, for the replacement equipment, is that right? IT replacement?
Yes.
Equipment fund?
Yeah, IT replacement fund is what we'll be funding for that, yes.
Because didn't we use last night 600 plus of that 1.1 million? And there's only a remaining 582?
Yeah, so that was.
Take out 360, you're left with 200,000?
Yeah, which will create an issue with the AV replacement for the recreation facility. So that will need to be discussed.
Right, so I would, you know, find a way to normalize it, lower the 360, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Between the two projects, the computer replacement, I did have a discussion with Director Lorenson. So we're trying to come up with a way that can we postpone the upgrades of AV systems in recreation facilities? I think we can. So, but the priority-wise, end-user computer replacement is a little bit higher, but we'll definitely average out all of the 773 computers across five years and we'll bring back the results on it.
We have 455 employees.
Yes.
So, so some of them have double, is that what's going on?
Some users have two. The reason for that is some of our legacy systems do not work really well with remotely. So what happens is we provide them a workstation computer at their cubicles at City Hall. And employees, when they are working remotely or off-site, they are VPNing into our network, remote desktoping into that workstation in their cubicle. And it works much better for them right now. So as the ERP system gets deployed out, we will be able to consolidate some of those. And those extra machines beyond FTE numbers, they are part-time employees as well. Part-time and temporary employees are taking up big portion of that number. And also, we have special computers. Like, for example, at each of the council dais, there's a computer just below that monitors. So they add about 20 machines there and so on. So we can provide additional information if you would like on where they are all located at.
Okay. I have questions, since you brought up the AV system at Parks and Recs.
Yes.
Director Lorenson? How much is this? How much is the?
So assessment, so what we're hoping to do is we are estimating about $100,000.
How much?
$100,000 for the assessment and design of the system for the first year. We do see a value of having one company come in and evaluate all three locations. So we have a consistency across all these facilities. And we are estimating about $300,000 at each facility. So first year is 400,000 that we're asking, following years 300,000 and another 300,000.
What do you mean facilities? I thought there's only one.
We, the project would include the community center, the senior center, and the sports center.
And if I may, I want to remind the council that the Information Technology Fund is replenished each year by 300, with $300,000. So that fund will be replenished to some extent on an annual basis. And that's part of your budgetary actions.
I got that, but it's going to be like almost like this. So, so if, I know it's needed. As I go there, Parks and Recs, and I mean Milpitas Sports Center. And we have issues with this sound system. So, okay, we'll think about it, thank you.
Yeah, and we can.
Thank you both so much.
You're welcome. And we can try to find some options to make that a little bit more reliable in the meantime.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
That wasn't too bad, right?
And also, also as a point of information, we have 11.6 million dollars.
I got that. Yeah, I got, I'm going to call on Chief Gerard, I mean Chief, where's Jason?
I'll defer my remark until then.
Okay, search and rescue. 1.85 million?
Good evening, Mayor. City staff and city council, Jason Skanover serves as your fire chief. Happy to provide some additional background on the request for the replacement of the urban search and rescue vehicle.
Okay, the way I understand it, this vehicle we purchased 1999, and it's 25 years old. And based on my briefing this afternoon, that we use it twice a year? Correct me if I'm wrong.
So the urban search and rescue vehicle is not currently staffed. It responds to, you know, various calls. It's not typically just two times a year. It can be more than that or less.
Less than two?
Yeah, I can provide, I've got some speaking notes with some background that will provide perhaps some more clarity that will help council make the decision on this particular request.
Okay, so I'll go with what you said. We use it twice a year for the last 25 years. And that's multiplied by two is 50 times. So in terms of age, it's really 25 years. But in terms of usage, that looks to me a brand-new vehicle.
So that's a good point, councilmember. I will share that it does have 97,000 miles on it. So up to, prior to 2020, the vehicle was staffed with a single firefighter and responded to every technical rescue incident, motor vehicle accident that we respond to. In 2020, we changed our deployment model and it became unstaffed. We shifted that firefighter over to the ladder truck. So it has accumulated quite a few miles, certainly exceeding all industry standards based on mileage and years of service.
What's the mileage, standard mileage for replacement? If it's really used more than twice a year?
So the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, doesn't typically focus on mileage. They look at years of service. So the recommendation is 15 years of service. And all fire apparatus is recommended to be considered obsolete at 25 years.
Okay. There is a, you're not going to man this. There's no need for manning, right? Meaning you don't need an FTE to man this vehicle, correct?
Correct, it's not staffed. So our current deployment model is it's what we consider cross-staffed with the personnel assigned to ladder truck. And those are our individuals that have been identified as our SMEs, subject matter extras, when it comes to tactical rescue, special operations. In addition to carrying all of our tactical rescue equipment, it also carries the entirety of our earthquake response package. And that is important to note because, you know, as your fire chief, when I'm asked what the single greatest threat to the city Milpitas is, it's the, it's a potential catastrophic earthquake. So it's imperative that we have the ability to store, maintain, and deploy all of that equipment, which equates to hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that's not designed or rated to be carried on fire engines. So it is standard practice for all hazards fire departments that provide technical rescue service to have a reliable urban search and rescue vehicle, whether it's staffed or unstaffed, to deploy that equipment when needed.
Okay, it's going to take 20, it will take, delivery date is 2028. Please explain to the rest of our audience on what is your backup plan? How are you, if there's no search and rescue vehicle, how are you, how are you doing it?
So as we've acquired that equipment over the years and we really started heavily investing in our tactical rescue equipment 10 years ago, based on our, you know, earthquake probability, we've, you know, that vehicle that we have currently is actually a medium rescue, which means it's got limitations on weight and storage capacity. So as we've acquired that additional equipment, we ran out of space. We've, what would happen is the overflow equipment has gone into ancillary trailers, various storage throughout Fire Station 1's training ground. We obviously have to keep that equipment secure. It's very expensive. It consists of search cameras, breach and breaking equipment, confined space equipment, just about any big tool you can think of. So that's been our backup plan now is if we ran out, as we've ran out of room on the current vehicle, we've got a Plan B of deploying that equipment on those support trailers. It's not an efficient manner, but it's doable right now. The issue that we're confronted with today is that it all relies on having at least some type of urban search and rescue vehicle to deploy the majority of our equipment. So because that vehicle has now exceeded all industry standards and is 25 years old, there is the real chance that in the near future, that vehicle just won't be available to us for a variety of reasons.
I understand. I think, yeah.
I'm sorry, to answer your question, we don't actually have, there is no Plan B if that vehicle becomes inoperable. We don't have the ability to deploy our equipment. We can't carry all of our equipment on trailers.
Besides the search and rescue vehicle, do you foresee any other vehicle that you might need replacement?
So, you know, we've been very fortunate to have council and city manager's office support in the previous five to six years to update our fire apparatus fleet. In approximately 2018, we were able to upgrade our frontline fire engines and our single ladder truck. And as you guys are aware, we got our ambulance about the same time. So currently, they're in very good condition. Our firefighters take very good care of our equipment. We do our best to prolong, you know, the longevity of that equipment. But there will be a time in the near future, especially when you factor in the three-year, you know, waitlist right now to get new fire engines and ladder trucks, that we'll be having conversations about replacing those vehicles that were purchased back in 2018. We have to forecast out the three-year build time with the NFPA recommendations, using those as a guide and obviously based on funding mechanisms from the city.
How much will it, if we sell the current one, the 1999, how much do you think we can sell it for?
So some preliminary research indicates that we could probably get somewhere between $35,000 and $50,000 for that vehicle. And then it's also important to note, as was shared in the slide, in an effort to be more, you know, fiscally responsible and operationally efficient, we also have another special operations vehicle, which is our hazardous materials vehicle at Station 4. That vehicle was purchased in 1990, certainly has exceeded all industry standards. In recognition of where we are in our budget process and how expensive these vehicles are, it's our, it's our goal to be more efficient. If we're fortunate enough to get this vehicle, we would like to phase out that hazardous materials vehicle and consolidate all of our special operations equipment that's currently deployed on those two vehicles.
So in essence, you're, we're getting one to replace two, is that correct?
Correct, and that will save the city, you know, definitely more than a million dollars in the future because that's another vehicle we won't have to replace.
I got it. And, and I think now I ask Finance Director, how much do we have on the Equipment Replacement Fund?
As of today, we have 11.6 million.
Okay. Okay. So I'm good with that, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you both.
Are there any questions related to the urban search and rescue vehicle?
Like you asked me, what color do we want? No, just kidding.
You guys, you guys can debate that, whatever color you want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. And now we have Vice Mayor.
I met someone by that part of town.
I met someone by that part of town, right? And he said, hey, Vice Mayor, how come we have buttholes and you have a shiny police car? Or we have a good equipment on, with the fire, right? I think my question is really something for the public to understand where the sources of these CIP funds are coming. That question is loaded, right? It's just like saying, hey, you don't know how to prioritize. You're spending our money in something that we don't even feel. And, and this budget discussion should clarify that, that we do have several sources of funds, right? And out of the thirty-eight point seven million CIP budget that we're discussing, only a portion of that, my memory serves well, about two point something eight million only comes from the CIP general fund. It is important to know that these sources, for the public to know that these sources, like the the water capital surcharge, the sewer infrastructure, the vehicle replacement fund, are things allocated for these projects that does not equate to whether or not they, they can drive without a butthole in some roads in the city. So here's the question. So out of the total CIP funds that we are discussing, how much are these are outside of our general fund?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. Can you clarify your question? What do you mean by outside of that?
Right, I mean, like the I think the two point five million, I rounded it off, that's coming from our own fund, other than other sources of fund, like the water fund, the surcharge fund, sources like that.
Can we put on Slide four, please? And then I'll turn it back to Lee Hock to answer the question about, you know, what, what, what are this is general fund dollars? And what is, and where are the other major sources? What else is on here other than general fund dollars?
Thank you, Mayor. So majority of the general fund money is funded community improvement category. The park category mainly funded by park fund, which is basically, that's another part of money that can only fund the park improvements. The street fund, the street category, majority funded by many street fund that include gas tag, Measure B, SB one. Those can only allocated to fund the street fund only. Water, sewer, and storm, those have its own funding sources. Like water, they have water surcharge, a capital surcharge that can only fund the water projects similar to sewer and storm. So to answer your question, yes, most of the general funds fund the community improvement, which is show right here, the community improvement is four point seven millions, but only two point four six that come from the general government CIP fund.
Okay, so the two point, how much is the last?
I believe two point four six.
So is it fair to assume that only two point four six million is coming from our general fund?
That is correct.
And the rest of the thirty-eight million is coming from funds that are already existing and doesn't really burden our general fund for purposes of CIP projects?
Yep.
If I may clarify once again, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with the microphone. If I clarify once again, the, the general government CIP ask this year is for money that already exists. In other words, leftover funds from prior fiscal years. So there is not a new ask for money. We're simply using what was left over.
Understand. I think that's the thread of my question, because if the public understands that our deficiency, really the structural, that formidable deficiency that we have, we will talk later on when we're discussing the operating fund, right? So there's less issue as to an impact of this CIP budget discussion to the structural fund that we're talking about.
For this fiscal year, yes.
For this fiscal year, okay. All right, so
Coming fiscal year.
So those, now let's focus on those that's coming from the general, I'll shortcut it, general fund. I forgot the in-between words, right? So I think I saw six projects, at least, right? That includes the USER, that includes, you know, our laptops and stuff like that. The, right, so this I think it's the slide where Councilmember Chua had asked, the six items, the one that's totaling to
Slide number ten, please.
Right. Two point five, yeah. So this is what we're talking about that's coming from, which we already have the fund, from the general CIP fund. And the way we, and three of these just came about recently. I saw it on bold letters on different slides, and I believe I heard that, you know, it's an addition to what had been proposed before.
So this, this slide right here show the six projects that are being funded by the government CIP, general government CIP. Five of the projects are the existing projects, and only one new project is being recommended, which is the SS4 improvement local marsh requirements.
Okay, so it's been an existing project and just one was added?
That is correct.
All right, I think that's my point. So it doesn't burden the grandest problem that we have, the structural deficit, because these funds are already available. Most of these funds are sourced from other than a general CIP fund, and we already have money on the projects that are being paid for by the general CIP fund.
That is correct.
Okay, then I'll reserve some more questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else have any questions?
So I do have a couple of questions. One of them was piggybacking on Councilmember Chua's remarks on the fires, the vehicle. Can you put that slide up? I think it's I think it was thirteen, yeah, the urban search and rescue vehicle. So on that one, I did have a question on so it is, it is, it was purchased in nineteen, it was purchased in nineteen ninety-nine, so it is twenty-five years old. But it, and it exceeds the National Fire and FPA fifteen-year replacement standard. So we're well, we're well over that. So, but what do you do with the equipment? Do you give it to other agencies, or do you, just curious what?
Thank you, Mayor, for clarification. Are you speaking to the actual physical apparatus itself? So we would work with Public Works to, to, either to sell the vehicle or, you know, basically just procure it out. They've got an auction process. I'm not completely familiar with it. But we would work with Public Works typically for vehicles that have any value to, to sell it.
And then the other question I had, you mentioned about a trailer. What, I'm not sure what you mean. Would you have to put it in a trailer or not? Can you clarify that?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. So what I was referring to is as we've acquired more equipment over the last ten years, we've run out of storage capacity in that, in that older vehicle that we currently are using. We purchased additional small, like picture, like a utility trailer that's towed by a pickup. And we've broken it down by categories. So we've got one trailer that carries our mechanical struts, which is used for trench rescue and structural collapse. We've got another trailer that we carry a lumber package in. And then we've got a third trailer, which was grant-funded, that we carry just a variety of, it's like a big toolbox. So again, the, the goal is, if we're fortunate enough to get the new urban search and rescue, is we'll phase out all of those trailers in addition to the hazardous materials vehicle, and we'll put it all on the new urban search and rescue, which will have a higher weight capacity and more storage.
Okay.
So it's just a way to be more operationally efficient and to, to maintain that expensive equipment that we've been fortunate to procure over the last couple of years. And it'll definitely increase the longevity. A lot of that equipment has to be plugged in and uses batteries, et cetera. It's not functional to keep it in trailers. Search cameras, all the tools are either battery-powered or run off of some type of power source.
So the trailer is like a storage, and, and where do you store that trailer?
So currently, the three trailers that I'm referring to are kept at Station One, kind of out behind the training tower, where we kind of have all of our ancillary support vehicles that aren't staffed.
Okay. So that's where you keep them inside? They're not out there?
They're outside right now, which also isn't, you know, logistically the best way to deploy them. But again, there probably is some value in those trailers. But most importantly is having all that equipment on a single apparatus that'll be parked indoors will just allow us to more quickly deploy it when we do get those calls. Because it's, naturally, it's not the best deployment model to be figuring out at the last minute which trailer has to go out based on the call, and who's gonna jump off of which rig to go get a pickup truck to hook up to the trailer and deploy it. Again, the USAR allows to carry all of that equipment on that vehicle.
Thank you. So I recall you guys, the fire department was asking for an ambulance. Is this the same thing, or is it a totally new ask?
Great question, Mayor. Excuse me. So the, the USAR is gonna be funded, if we're fortunate enough to get it, would be funded out of the CIP, because it comes out of the equipment replacement fund, which is managed by CIP. The, the request for the backup ambulance would be part of the operating budget, I believe. But again, there is, my understanding is there is funding existing in the current equipment replacement fund. It's around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a new ambulance is around three hundred and twenty-five. So we, we do have to, you know, come up with that difference. But we will still be requesting that backup ambulance, only because, as you guys are aware, our, our single ambulance right now has been overwhelming success for the community. Responds to two thousand calls per year. We're transporting approximately one hundred and fifty patients a year. It's a, it's considered a safety net in light of, you know, the county's current ambulance deployment model. But the problem is, is a single point of failure. We've only got one. We've been fortunate for the last three or four years that the vehicle hasn't been involved in any type of accident or hasn't had any mechanical failure. But, you know, my job is to make sure that we've got a Plan B and that we've always got other options. And if the, if our single ambulance we have today was rendered out of service, we don't have the ability to continue to transport patients.
And that would, that would come up in the operating budget, not this one here?
I believe so, yes.
I think we're in the county, we are the only, I think we're the only two cities that have ambulances, Santa Clara and NS, so.
There are some other cities that are, they, they've noticed what Milpitas is doing, and that's a testament to the support we've had from council and the city manager's office to be proactive and provide a superior level of EMS to our community. So I do thank you guys for that. Again, it's been an overwhelming success. There are other cities that have taken note of what we're doing. I believe Mountain View just acquired an ambulance. It's not staffed yet. And Morgan Hill, I believe, also deploys an ambulance, and San Jose has a few ambulances in service.
Okay. Yeah, I guess when that item comes up, I'll be asking more questions on that. The other, thank you very much. So, and then the other question I have is the what was it? The computer replacement, oh, that would be Dan. Thank you, Dan. So if you can bring up that slide, there it is. So on that slide, you said historically, the city computers have been replaced on an as-needed basis. And now you're going to, now we're going to bulk, purchasing them in bulk. So I'm not sure, why, why are we doing that?
Thank you, Mayor. So computer manufacturers, sometimes when they, let's just say, we find a model that works for us, following month, they may not make the same model. So it is important for us to have a consistency and not have way too many different models and options available across the city. So it is generally a, it's a best practice to purchase in bulk and deploy them out in bulk.
Yeah, I've been, I've always been, because technology changes so fast, I've always been informed that it's not good to buy in bulk, because you might buy a, a lot of equipment or computers, and then next year, there'll be, you know, you'll have, they'll have a better model. So, yeah, I'm, I'm still, I still like the on-as-needed basis, to be honest with you, because technology, technology does change rapidly.
You are correct about how quickly the things change. But generally, we were fortunate, again, because of your foresight of setting aside some ARPA funding. So we were able to replace three hundred computers in two years. So if we do purchase hundred computers next year, for example, we will be able to replace it within that timeframe. Actually, it's shorter than one year. So we are not, we are very conscious about overpurchasing equipment much sooner and not being able to deploy in a reasonable amount of time, so the machines are aging whilst it's sitting in the box. We do absolutely minimize that.
So how many computers do you have in inventory right now that are sitting there?
We have seven hundred seventy-three computers total across the whole city. And what we're requesting next year is, based on the age of the computers, the total, including laptop and desktops, is two hundred forty-five computers, which adds up to three hundred sixty thousand, that includes the docking stations for the laptops.
Okay. You said clarify some, but yeah, as I, as I mentioned, I still, as needed. Thank you very much for that. And I think that was it for that. The, one more question. Oh, I'm done, I'm done, I think. And then water conservation, what slide was that one on? I think it was item seventy-one twenty-six.
I think it's slide number eight.
Was it eight? On that one, the funding source is a water capital surcharge. Just curious, what kind of wat- water conservation programs do you do? And I think that would be Christian. Good afternoon.
Good evening. That is, those funds are used to supplement and cost share with our conservation efforts with Valley Water.
Okay, okay. Now, what about San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, BASQ?
I, so we do have BASQ obligations, but those come out of our operating budget.
Okay, so, so this two hundred thousand, is it, that comes out of our general fund? Or is that comes out of the water utility?
This is water, this is water enterprise, these are water enterprises' funds to sort of spearhead and augment our proactive water conservation initiatives. Turf replacement, we sometimes have to put, you know, it's a, it's a shared pool effort in the county, and every agency puts up a share of those costs for operational efficiencies, and, and so this is our supplement to that.
I see. So it's just like the T-PAC?
Yeah, similar, similar to that.
Where we have to pay for that, for the sewer, okay. So I was just curious what, if, what that entailed, but I'm clear on that. And, yeah, thank you very much for that. And then the other one is technology drive. I can't remember what slide that was. But that's the one that's four million, something?
Slide number nine.
Slide number nine. Now that one, four million, six hundred thousand. You know, since I've been on the console for many, many years, that, that, that street technology drive has always had major, major problems. It's like, is there a sinkhole or something that the pipes are always breaking? And, and why so much money?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. So basically, maybe about six, seven months ago, we noticed there are deformations on the pavements on that technology drive. And we do some investigations. So we send this, do the CCTV inspection on the existing sixty-six-inch storm drain pipe. We see the storm drain is in very bad conditions. That caused a major problem to that pavement deformations. So we investigate further, look into the existing sewer system as well. So there are some sewer pipe that are being damaged as well. So those four point six million is to replace the sixty-six-inch storm drain system. That is a very huge pipe that helped to transport all the storm drain system from the city and also include the pavement restoration as well. So one note that I would like to add as well is that this storm drain is fifteen feet deep. So it's very deep. That is also contribute to the high cost for this repair. Additionally, the pavement in that area, we have our geotext engineer take a look at that. The subgrade of the pavement is not suitable for the, is not
suitable for the, it's not a suitable soil for the pavement. So we need to excavate the whole section of the road, go down 12 to 15 feet deep, replace with a very suitable soil. So those are all the, contribute to the very high cost of these improvements.
Yeah, I was just, that's just a lot of money. But I know it's already, this funding source is already there. I mean, gas tax, sewer, infrastructure. But, um, I, I, you know, just every, every year, I've always see major work being done there. And I don't know what we can do so that way we can, it doesn't come back all the time. Cause it, it does cost after a while. Um, okay. Well, thank you for that. That's, that's it on that. And I have, I'll have couple, couple more before you, I go to you. Um, uh, slide, I think it's page 10, slide 10, Fire Improvements, 3403. I was wondering which fire station is the one asking for the improvements? Uh, that would be Brian? Which one, which is it? Is it Station One, Station Two? And, and what type of improvements? Because we have some very, Sunny Hills Fire Station, that one is, I don't think it's ever been revamped. It's been, it's been ignored.
Slide number five, please. Oh, this one's fine, too.
Yes. Um, so my understanding of this particular item is we're focused on, um, again, related to fire apparatus. We want to, um, promote the longevity, longevity of our apparatus that don't fit in our apparatus base. Currently, they sit outside and they're exposed to the elements. So we've been fortunate enough to work with Public Works and CIP to acquire, um, exterior, um, awnings, commercial awnings, that'll be located outside, uh, behind the, the training tower, Station One. And that'll allow us to take our vehicles, um, that don't fit in the apparatus, be our reserve vehicles typically, and we'll park them in that awning with the, um, with the goal of extending the longevity of those vehicles, the paint, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, and definitely the, so this isn't, this isn't, um, related to Fire Station Three, but certainly that's something that's on our mind, um, as you guys are aware.
On your radar. Yeah, I think I've, I've heard that before, but it keeps getting bypassed.
I'd love to see it rebuilt in my time, but...
I think it's the oldest fire station in Milpitas.
I believe that it, it's, so that was the twin of the Station Two that we replaced, and they were built around 1965.
Yeah. It's, I, was when I was a kid, that's, that was, it was there.
So when you're ready to start designing it, let me know and we can sit down and start coming up with the plan.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. And then, thank you so much. And then the other one, uh, project number 3489, Public Art Program. It says recommended funding amount, 75,000. So, so I'd like some clarity because I thought, I always thought that that paid for itself when the developers, when we do that in Luffy. So why are we, um, recommending funding for it?
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the question. So annually, per the mural art program and policy, $50,000 is transferred from the Public Art Fund into the Public Art CIP. We've asked for an additional $25,000 this year to be transferred due to the, um, culmination of the new public art policy, which will have recommendations for maintenance on existing art pieces. So the money is not coming from the general fund, it's coming from the Public Art Fund and putting it into the, uh, CIP for public art.
Okay, that's, that's, good, that's what I really wanted to know. What, where's that money coming from? But it's not coming from the general fund. It's coming from the pot, the art pot. Okay. Okay. And that's, that's, um, that's all I have then for this. Um, and I'm glad that the library elevator is being repaired, um, and that we're gonna have a guard there, hopefully. Okay. Thank you very much. And now we have Councilmember, um, Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before, Chief, Jason, one last question for you. This was brought up, I think, during the, the budget process from last year. Do you have a plan now to, to address, like, uh, on the ambulance? I mean, some charges, whoever uses it, the, is there a plan on how to do that?
So we've been, we've been billing for service for transports. We partnered with a, with an outside company called Whitman Enterprises. So we are charging, charging for transports, um, for about 18 months. We anticipate to bring back approximately $150,000 this fiscal year. Um, so we, yes, we are transporting for service.
Well, what about my, my recommendation on, cause we got, we get a number of calls to the Elmwood facilities and that's houses, the 15 cities in Santa Clara, and we're the one being burdened with the costs.
Yes.
Do you have plans for that now?
So, yes, thank you for the question. Um, I do recall us having that conversation. I know you don't forget anything and you've got a good memory. So I did, uh, I did reach out to the county's EMS director and had a, a meeting with that individual probably a month ago. And what I did is just expressed our concerns with the amount of calls we go to Elmwood. So as you guys are aware, our, our average has been about 300 calls per year to Elmwood, um, the Elmwood facility, which, which is a significant impact for department or size. Um, um, what I shared with the director of EMS was that it is a burden on our fire department in our city and that we would like them to look at any funding mechanism or reimbursement that we can get through that process. I also spoke to the, um, my colleague in San Jose, who has the other correctional facility in their city. Um, and, you know, I asked him if he had any insight on conversations that he's had or anything he could share. And what he shared with me is, um, unfortunately, they haven't found a way to be reimbursed for their responses. Um, they're currently, you know, there currently isn't, isn't anything substantial I've seen through our conversations that's going to reimburse us. But I'm certainly willing to keep, um, keep engaging them and, and, and looking at ways that we could be reimbursed.
Okay. That sounds good. At least the ambulance, we're getting some revenue.
Yes. And, and, and just, um, for clarification, our ambulance typically doesn't go to Elmwood very often. We're very strategic on how we deploy it. Uh, many of the calls at, at Elmwood are what we consider low acuity calls, and it's not part of our strategic plan to deploy our ambulance. Obviously, if, if it's a more significant call, we do, but we still don't transport from there very often. Uh, county, the county's EMS ambulance provider transports. So the burden on our ambulance isn't nearly as significant as it is on the fire engine at Station One that responds to that, that facility.
Thank you. And can I call on Chief Gerard? I just have one quick question. And also Director Christian? It's really quick one. This is in line with the Equipment Replacement Fund. Do you foresee any, any equipment needed to be replaced in the next year or two?
We're talking about vehicle replacements or just all?
Whatever you have that you need to replace. And the funds, the source of funds will be from the Equipment Replacement Fund. I'm just trying to forecast.
Yeah, I would, uh, thank you for the question, Jared Hernan, who's serving as your police chief. Um, I would say that things on the horizon that we need to be aware of, uh, besides regular capital outlay vehicle replacements, would be probably a CAD, uh, upgrade or replacement, which is a pretty expensive, uh, product. The one that we've had in place has been in place, I'm gonna look at Daniel, maybe 10 years, probably around 10 years, which far exceeds what others are doing, thankfully. Uh, IT makes sure that we're running strong. Um, so we're able to kind of do upgrades and those types of things. But at some point in the future, that is something that we're gonna have to look at. I don't think that's gonna happen in the next two years, but three, four, maybe five years out, we're probably gonna have to have a serious conversation.
And approximately, the cost is?
About 1.2 million today. So I don't know what that looks like.
In the future.
In the future.
Thank you, Chief.
Of course.
I have the same question for you, Director Christian.
We have, uh, we have ongoing, uh, vehicle, uh, equipment replacement, uh, obligations. We still have approximately, or at least 50% of our pool is older than 20 years. If we were, if you said to me, Christian, go and replace all the vehicles today, we would probably exhaust the entire $11 million that's available.
That's what I'm afraid of, so...
I, I suspected that's what you were asking.
Exactly.
We do have, uh, we, we have submitted a request for, um, ongoing replacement, um, which, which hopefully we'll discuss, um, in not too distant future. Um, we also have a, another interesting wrinkle to this is we have obligations for, uh, advanced clean feat, uh, clean fleet regulations, um, requiring, um, in two years that every vehicle we buy has, is alternative fuel powered, so no longer ice, internal combustion engine vehicles. So in addition to our vehicle, uh, replacement challenges, we now have incremental costs to replace those because they are, they are traditionally more expensive. We have constraints as well as finding adequate supplies. And so we, you know, despite our best efforts and our intentions, we will invariably be in a position, we will, where we will have a protracted replacement cycle because of, um, external forces beyond our control.
So do you foresee anything immediate, like in the next, uh, wh- why is there no requests from your department for this budget cycle?
We do have requests.
You do?
We do have requests. A- as mentioned, um, departmental requests will be discussed after adoption of this base budget.
Hmm, the phase two one?
Yes, that's phase two.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Chua. And I just wanna comment on that. Uh, I've been getting so many complaints from residents that because everything is elect, going to be electric, now they have to replace their gas heaters and the cost that even, even their electrical power box. It, it, it's not just replacing the heater, it's replacing all that. And it's so expensive. So I, I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, it's, it's a big challenge in the state of California. So anyway, uh, we have, um, Vice Mayor.
I think this is more on, uh, replacement policy. What I've heard so far is, uh, you know, end of life, longevity, uh, what else do they hear? And, you know, throughout the years, like, uh, the mayor, I've been to, uh, different cities and, and different, uh, city halls, right? And believe me, uh, when I say that , uh, their equipments are for repli- replacements away from what we have. And I'm sure that they did want to, to, you know, to replace those equipment as well. I think my point is, yes, we do have, you know, about 11 million in, uh, replacement fund, uh, but is our policy, uh, using standards, right, uh, really a better, uh, policy than, uh, something else. You know, I, I remember, you know, when I first had my car, they said, just change the, change the, the oil, it will, uh, live long. All I'm saying is I haven't heard any, uh, repair costs, uh, during this discussion. It's always replacement costs. And I'm assuming that we do have a, a repair fund somewhere and we're taking good care of our equipments. Maintenance. So why, uh, why do we prefer, uh, the longevity table? What a statistic says about how long this equipment, uh, will last as, uh, contrast to how well we take care of our equipments that may last longer than a given table. And then we don't exhaust the replacement fund.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Director D'Renzo can, um, provide additional information if needed. But, you know, there's a, we definitely try to keep our vehicles and equipment as long as we can. Um, there comes a point in the life of a piece of equipment where the costs of continually repairing it with our fleet, um, team outweighs the cost of just scrapping it and buying a new one over time. And so that's all analyzed as part of what the life of an equipment should be. And that's what, that, um, and I don't have off the top of my head what our standard life of our equipment are supposed to be. But when that is factored in regarding the mileage and the years of a piece of equipment, that's typically, that miles and years is on a typical piece of equipment. After that time is when it just costs too much to maintain, kind of like when, you know, our, our personal vehicles, when we, you know, you know.
Right. Well, as I said, yeah, that, that's the standard, right? It's, it's a, an algorithm calculated by this, let's say, vehicle manufacturers. What I'm saying is, do we have data to, to, uh, affirm that? Have we had experience, let's say, 10 city vehicles, uh, that's supposed to be near the end of its life? We, uh, uh, spent money repairs more than at the cost of its replacement? Or are we basing it on studies? We're basing it on, in standards. Cause I haven't heard anything that, you know, hey, please give us something to repair, uh, this. It's always...
Christian will provide more information.
Okay. So I shall. Um, we do, we have a lot of that data available. In fact, our, our fleet operation does, um, uh, data mining on, um, repair and maintenance costs all the time. So, um, there is now, there is a standard, um, lifecycle for equipment based on the type of equipment. Um, a traditional F-250 has five to six-year lifecycle. A CCT van and a, um, a Baxter truck has a 20-year lifecycle, for instance. Some of that is supported by manufacturer data. Some of that is simply long, long-held understanding and beliefs of how long these vehicles last on the street, with the caveat that they are maintained properly. Now, invariably, we will get to a place in that vehicle's life where we are throwing bad money after a bad piece of equipment. And that's where we make an executive decision that it doesn't warrant throwing money into a vehicle. Or in some cases, we have regulations that almost compel us to replace that. So we have new, uh, CARB standards. Let's say, despite our intentions to maybe, um, we've been maintaining a piece of equipment, a diesel equipment, for instance, that has now new particulate requirements and obligations for us to monitor and measure. And we may feel that over the years, we babyed this piece of equipment, we could really ride it out for another five years, but CARB is forcing us to replace it. So there are various nuances that go, that go into, into this conversation. But I assure you, Samu and I, um, talk about fleet replacement, um, you know, nauseatingly often.
Well said.
Okay.
That is what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to hear, other than, hey, this is the standard for this industry. Because I know you're gonna say that, uh, that, uh, you know, you're justifying, uh, that indeed it, it's more practical to, to buy a replacement, whether it's based on, so new requirements, the usage of the, the equipment or not. But I, I think that's, uh, something that, you know, uh, the community needs to hear as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, um, you, you try to take care of equipment, but after a while, the parts wind up costing more than, and it adds up. Like, like my 1955 Chevy. It, uh, it, sometimes it, it, it costs, it's, you know, winds up costing more. So anyway, um, thank you for that. Is there anyone else that would like to make any more comments? Okay. Is that the end of the CIP?
Oh, yes, it is. And now, um, I think...
Okay. So we wanna take a break, like maybe 15 minutes after the CIP. So that way, guys can all recharge. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Are you gonna be in it?
I am. Okay, we're back from our break. And the meeting is reestablished. And we're having, I guess, the part for the... Go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we'll continue with the meeting. And we now have, we would like to have a conversation with the council and receive your feedback and direction on the proposed operating budget, phase one of the proposed operating budget. And we have our Assistant City Manager Matt Cano, as well as our Finance Director Matt Luce Kafresi-How here to provide a short presentation. And then we'll proceed from there. Thank you.
Councilmembers, yeah, it's my apologies. Chua, Leon, and Lam.
Finance Director Kafresi-How? We need you to speak more into your microphone, please.
That's not working. I will, I will. Is that better? Great. All right, this is a brief presentation. It's pretty succinct. And as we go through it, of course, it's always a conversation. So stop me if you wish. But let's see if we can get through it. And as we go through it, of course, it's always a conversation, so stop me if you wish, but let's see if we can get through it and then you can ask questions at the end. So next slide, please. City managers already made remarks, so we're going to skip that part. The, this is the agenda. We're first going to review what we happened back in February 18th, 2025 at our special study session for the operating budget. We'll go over the preliminary FY 26, 35, 10 year forecast, the feedback and guidance that we got from you all. And then we will look at the financial forecast, which has been adjusted as of March 31st, 2025. That reflects all the actions that were taken since the budget was adopted on June 4th of 2024. And then we'll go a little bit into what we are proposing as our deficit reduction. So we'll review that. At a summary level, then by council priority areas, we'll give that to you in detail. And then we'll demonstrate how that affects both the FY 25, 26 year as well as going into future years and addressing some of our structural deficits. We will also review what we are proposing once again as our phased approach to essentially adopting and appropriating a balanced budget and then taking further actions on any proposals. And then we'll just let you read the recommendation and then we'll have a discussion. So next slide, please. So next slide, please. So this, once again, is what we presented back on February 18th, 2025. It is not new information. This is exactly the same 10 year forecast. We were looking at a deficit as of 25, 26 of 3.1 million with a substantial, with the deficit increasing over the succeeding years. Next slide, please. So this is a distillation of the feedback and guidance that you provided us. One of the points that you made was to, during that presentation, we did give you the summary, a summary of what the community survey was. You had received a presentation prior to that of the full community survey that FM3 had done. We presented some highlights. You asked us to integrate community feedback and align spending with community priorities. And also look at our current spending. So that was that dollar bill that I'm working on. And then also incorporate the community service, survey, the service, survey findings into our future budget planning so that it's obvious that we're addressing those concerns that are raised during that survey. We also asked us to strengthen our marketing strategy and enhance revenue initiatives. One, to promote Milpitas as a business and tourist destination. And also, we are proposing a current, but a look at our current business tax system, modernizing that system and being prepared with that modernized system to put it before the voters for a 2026 ballot measure. Then we got very clear direction to reduce expenditures. The concern was the structural deficit. To address that structural deficit due to potential economic factors, as some are being realized even as of today. And then also to balance FY 25, 26 proposed operating budget without reserves. So this represents those three points that distillation is the brief that we walked away from, from that February 18th, 2025 meeting. You also asked at the very end to have the additional study sessions. And that parentheses is deliberate because we may have more on the operating budget or the CIP. At your pleasure. This is our next, we, this is our second study session and we just had the second study session for operating budget. Then we are having, you've already just seen the second study session for the capital improvement program budget. Next slide, please. This, a couple of things I want to make, points I'm going to make on this slide. I have historically never in my municipal career represented a 10 year budget forecast. To be blunt, it is quite fantastical after five years. You are, if you just think about our condition today, where you have changes at the federal level, changes at the local level, changes at the state level, and those are significant changes that affect your revenues. And you have situations, think about the five year, if you're looking at a 10 year plan, 10 years ago, nobody was thinking about COVID. So, so, so why, what I've done is lopped off essentially the last five years and so we can focus on the next five years for our structural deficit. There is this. There is a change in FY 24, 25. And that, this reflects actions, city council actions through March 31st, 2025, both at the mid-year and a prior action that was taken for funding the IFF contract. And so that is with the use of reserves you are seeing there. And once again, we are balanced, if our adopted and amended budget for FY 20, 24, 25 through city council actions. And then we still have the remaining 3.1 deficit of FY 25, 26 and subsequent years. I just want to also focus that the council direction was to address the FY 20, 25, 26 deficit without touching reserves. Next slide, please. So we're now going to go through what we are proposing to put before you today. After you gave us that clear direction under the guidance and the administration direction of the city manager, finance and human resources, discussed with all the departments, their needs and any budget proposals that they could put before, before us today and to present to city council for thoughts. What their north star was, was essentially this slide. When they were looking at programs and levels of service, essential, core and baseline programs, always looking at the levels of service. The definitions are there. I'm not going to read them to you. But in summary, the essential program is legally mandated and critical for community health and safety. Think about public safety. Your core programs enhance quality of life and are valuable for community support. They're not required by law. So you have some, some things that we do for affordable housing are not required by law, but we do them anyway for best practice. We also provide supports at programs like MAP. That's not required by law either. In other words, providing grants and assistance to the most needy in our community. And then there are baseline programs. Those ensure continuity and compliance, but may not contribute, directly contribute to strategic goals or vital community needs. That essentially thinks like, I'm always calling out senior yoga, but senior yoga is great or the teen center, things like that. So next slide, please. This is a summary, and I'm going to stay on this for a while to let you all think about it. This essentially reflects at a summary level what we are proposing to address the FY 24, 25, 26 stuck deficit. And so on the left hand side is a 1.6 total of revenue increases. The educational revenue augmentation fund, we had been putting aside roughly anywhere from 20 to 30% of those funds, of those excess property funds, they were coming to us and that was pending some litigation that is still outstanding and has not been fully settled. And that was at the, through the guidance of the county. And the county said you can now ratchet that back to 18%. We get anywhere from $4 to $5 million a year from ERF money, so it's still a significant amount. But there is still a savings, a quote unquote savings. So we're able to recognize a $952,000 savings simply because we went from putting aside 30% to putting aside 18%. I have, don't have great news for transient occupancy hotel tax. We actually had to take a reduction in that. They're simply not doing as well as we had expected when we did the original estimates. The prop, however, property tax estimate and sales as used tax estimates came in much better, as you heard yesterday from Paula Coen and Tracy Vales, Vassili, who both provided a pretty thorough explanation of why we were, the city of Milpitas was doing much better in these two areas. So property tax estimate is 450,000 and the sales tax estimate is increased by 335,000. When we went, got together back on February 18th, 2025, we did not have quarter end numbers. That's important to note. Also, as both of them said yesterday, a lot of these numbers lag, sales tax especially for two months. So we did not have the usual annual bump of the November, December increases for the holiday purchases. And then, of course, property tax, those of you own a home, you pay property tax, it's due in November. Most people pay December 10th. I know I do. And so we actually were able to understand much better and have a clearer understanding of what the remaining half would be that we would be receiving in the April, May timeframe. And so on the revenue side, that's 1.6 million. And then we went back and I do have to commend my colleagues that are here and on Zoom for their work in this arena. They proffered quite a bit. This is a subset of what we've offered. But we will go through these in detail and the next slide will have much more detail on this. So salaries and benefits, that reflects a level of service reduction and therefore a consequent level of reduction in FTEs or full-time equivalents of 813,000. Some temporary help, some contractual expenditures as well of 531,000, some grants. And these are, these, we're not decreasing grant expenditures, but we are decreasing the level of service that's associated with that grant. And then some non-personal expenses that we are reducing for about 106. So that's about 1.5, 1.6. You add those two numbers of revenue increases and expenditure decreases, you get to the 3.164, 539. And then the structural deficit, as we demonstrated on a prior page, this is a little more detailed, a lot more digits, 3 million, roughly 3.1 million. And our surplus or deficit, since it's in the black, is about 68,000. These are forecast numbers, but these are fairly tight, especially on the expenditure side. I'm gonna, yes, please.
I'm sorry, did, what did you, what did you?
And I also want to mention, Mayor, we have about three more slides after that.
We want to wait till they're done. And then we'll, just make sure that the slide that you want to discuss, you just write it down so that we all know. Thank you.
To the slide nine. So then let's go to the next slide, which has the same information on the expenditure side because the revenue side is pretty straightforward. It's four areas. But this is a breakdown and I'm going to let you absorb that for a moment. Is broken down by council priority areas, department, the proposed expenditure reduction, whether it's going back to those, that north star of essential core or baseline services and totals. And I will keep quiet for about a minute or so to let you all look at it.
I have, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and so Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager. As Luce mentioned on the prior side, there's like one, there's one point, approximately 1.55 million dollars worth of expenditure reductions that we're showing as a proposed for this base budget process. And so I will read, can we go back to the next slide, please? Um, thank you. So I will read down the list of these with brief descriptions and then our leadership team is also here if there's questions afterwards in more detail about any of these items. So the first one, youth scholarships. This would reduce the annual amount for youth scholarships from 30,000 to 15,000. For this year, that is, $15,000 is the number that we, we, you know, we typically, was a question, oh, that we would spend.
You can continue.
Although it would continue, although it is increasing, so we may want to look at increasing in the future, but $15,000 would cover what we currently spend. The next one is the city council fee waiver and donation process, reducing this down to $12,000. Is slightly above what we typically spend annually, so this should be sufficient to match what we have typically been giving for a fee waiver and donations by the city council. Holiday lights. This would remove the lights from the trees in front of city hall during the holidays, although the lights behind city hall, such as the holiday tree and other decorations would remain. Seasonal workers. This would remove part-time seasonal workers from the parks team, which result in a reduction to the frequency of certain maintenance activities such as restrooms, but that cleaning would still continue, just the frequency would be reduced for these part-time workers. The Fourth of July 2026 event, this would cancel the Fourth of July event for the summer 2026. While this is a great annual event, it does require a significant amount of staff time and cost to produce. And so there, that's why there would be a significant savings by not hosting it in 2026. Recreational swim. This removes a handful of weeks in the summer that is for open recreational swim at the sports center. Annual attendance for this has continued to dip over the years and we are looking at shifting towards more organized swim nights, such as a movie night at the pool model instead of just the general open recreational swim. The building inspector position, the current inspection activity levels, this is for the inspecting mostly private development activities, are lower than in the past, so we can handle this with existing staff today by removing this currently vacant position. But if private development does increase in the future, we may need to discuss how to fund this position again in the future. However, if private development does increase, the revenues with the city will also be increasing at the same time. The state of the city address, this does not cancel, this proposal would not cancel the state of the city address. This would just be a slight reduction in the budget for the state of the city to have more limited food and beverages than we typically do at that event. The day porter service. Our custodial contractor for our city buildings currently provides janitorial service for city buildings. The day porter service provides enhanced cleaning beyond the regular cleaning that happens during the regular shifts. Reducing this could lead to longer lead times for responses if there's a spill or an incident. However, the regular scheduled maintenance, or sorry, custodial for our facilities would continue if, even if we didn't have this day porter service in the future that handles the spot cleaning between events and roving to just make sure everything's taken care of. The commissioner dinner, this would defund the annual commissioner dinner for spring 2026. We would still continue that this, this current fiscal year, however. Housing administrative support. Currently, we have a position on the housing team that is being funded out of the general fund. And it is more appropriate moving forward that that position be funded out of housing funds. So this would continue to fund that position. However, that position would be used, funded using housing funds as opposed to general fund dollars moving forward, which would save this annual amount in the general fund. There are two miscellaneous for fire. There's different non-personal accounts within the fire department that the team, that the fire team is looked at that can be reduced without significantly impacting services, and these are non-personal accounts. There is a office assistant temporary support funding in the fire department that has not been used lately and we can move forward without that funding, that $15,000 for that position, part-time position moving forward. Fire inspector, this is also a vacant position similar to the building inspector. Current private development inspection activities are lower in the past, so we can handle this with the existing staff today. As mentioned with the building inspector, however, if private development increases in the future, we may need to discuss how to relook at funding this position in the future to meet future demands. Crossing guards. City council established the crossing broad card program in 2006. There's a total of 33 intersections. We supply crossing guards for with 37 guards. For our past analysis, approximately 12 of these 33 intersections do not have sufficient pedestrian counts to warrant guards. However, the city has traditionally, because we've had the funding, we have traditionally continued to fund those intersections. This proposal would reduce the number of intersections we have, we fund crossing guards at, by, take 12 of those intersections essentially away so that we would only be providing crossing guards at those intersections where the pedestrian counts warranted those, that service. And that's, that's a brief summary of each of these items and we, I understand that, I know there will probably be more questions on that, but for now I'll ask to go to the next slide.
Before we, if we could go back just one slide, actually two slides to 10, nine, please. Important focus that 1552074 that, that our Assistant City Manager Cano just went through, those are recurring reductions. So those will popu, those will continue throughout, throughout. In other words, the following years will be reduced by those amounts. So that's a really important point. The other important point is those revenue fines are pretty much one time. In other words, we, we had an extraordinary, as Paula and Tracy said yesterday, in both cases of property tax and sales taxes, we got a bump. Not clear why, they're both looking at the areas, but effectively we've got a bump. So revenues, one time, expenditure decreases are recurring. So can we jump to slide 11, please? So given those numbers, if you can remember back, we did the five year, we lopped it off, include, included the actions that were done by the city council through March 31st, 2025. And that top table reflects what you saw a couple of slides ago. Then the next piece that's titled by reduction proposals is essentially represents that, those corrections. As you can see in FY 25, 26, there is a total of one time, 1.6, recurring 1.5 for a total of 3.1, which effectively meets the brief of the council. meets the brief of the council provided on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, which addressed the FY twenty twenty-five, twenty-six deficit without the use of reserves. What's also important, looking beyond twenty-five and twenty-six, the twenty-six and twenty-seven, we do have a deficit, but we no longer have a structural deficit because we have made the twenty-five, twenty-six budget balance. And so this is an improved picture, obviously, and, and of course, the one point five does a waterfall to the remaining number of years. So this is, this is quite an improved picture. I'll give you a couple of minutes to look at that, and then we'll go to our next slide. Next slide, please. This is a graphic request of what we are proposing as far as adopting our operating budget for this year, and actually our CIP as well. We are required both by state and our own MUNICode, the Milpitas MUNICode, to have a, to have a budget, an appropriated budget in place July first of every year. We can't spend a penny without it. And so what we are proposing is in phase one, in May twenty twenty-five, given your acceptance of the, what we're proposing before you, or some movement that we can do, because we do have some other things that we can put in, but we're trying to stick just to what we balance, essentially adopt the balanced FY twenty-five, twenty-six proposed operating budget, and then appropriate those funds. We would come back to you in May twenty twenty-five later for another study session specific to city council consideration of new service levels proposals. So these are proposals that were put forth by our directors, that, for example, are revenue generators, we want to put forward a proposal for modernizing our business tax. And also, we have a couple of other proposals that are, that we expect to be short-term investments for long-term returns, such as the economic development strategic plan that needs to be redeveloped. The five-year is just finishing, and Director Andrade can speak to that more in detail, but that's another proposal, along with others, that we want to put forward. We have, I want to be clear, we have not identified funds for those, those proposals. They're roughly divided, what we'd be recommending is about one point two million, roughly half of them are one time and the other half are recurring. So there would be just, not just a one-time hit in FY twenty twenty-five, but an ongoing effect on our balance. The, then we would come back, this is the beginning of phase two. So phase two, we come back once again in June, potentially for the adoption of the amended budget, which would include the approved new proposals, whichever is approved by the council, and then appropriation of funds. And then we would, at this very same time, start having additional sections for, for the long term, effectively put into place a process that looks at our levels of service through a lens of a hybrid zero-based budget. We would be looking, doing a review and analysis of core budgeting elements, our five sources of revenue, for example, a really hard look at them again, and also the levels of service through programs throughout the city. Then we would expect to come back to you in spring twenty twenty-six, and obviously we'd be come back to you during, from June twenty twenty-five, spring twenty twenty-six. These dates are brackets, they're milestones more than anything. And we will come back to you in the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget with a, to adopt a hybrid zero-based operating budget, which addresses a structural deficit. So that is the plan that we are considering. These are rough dates, once again, they're milestones. I'll give you a few minutes to look at that. And then we'll go to our next slide, which is the recommendation. And we've received, you've received the staff presentation, so that's a check for that, but now we are looking for feedback and guidance from the council. And without any questions, we will entertain any questions at your pleasure.
Council members, do you have any questions on this presentation? Any comments? We have Councilmember Lamb.
Go back to slide number nine.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes. Can you go to presentation page number nine?
Slide nine, please. Yes.
Can you explain transient occupancy hotel tax? I'm still not clear about that.
Of course. That is a tax imposed, and thank you for the question, that is a tax imposed on people who come to our beautiful city and stay in one of our twenty-two hotels or motels. It's essentially a service that, a service that, tax that we impose for, while they're here visiting our city, they will be using our roads, they'll be using our parks, they'll be going to our wineries. And so effectively, it's a way to defray those additional costs that providing those services to that transient population will incur, that will be using.
Okay. Why would that be negative, hundred and twenty-five thousand?
It's negative because it's based on occupancy. So if the hotels are not meeting their occupancy levels that were projected when we first got their numbers from them, in other words, people aren't coming to stay. So fewer, fewer nights where people are putting their heads on, in a hotel bed mean we're not able to collect taxes.
I think another way of saying that is that the current estimate is below what the original estimate was. That's why it's showing as a negative.
That's better, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That explains it?
Sometimes, sometimes. Remember, we have twenty-two hotels and motels, so it's not just focused on one or two of them.
Okay. So this is a hundred and twenty-five thousand below the expectation?
Below our forecast, yeah.
Hmm, okay. Nice. Yeah, good.
Louz, on a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for the crossing guards, at the last meeting, I remember we planned to have the cost split with the school district. Have we reached out to them?
We did have, I'm, City Manager, I'm going to ask you to provide some feedback on that, because you were leading that discussion with MUSD regarding crossing guards. And we also have, Chief Cherry can discuss more why these particular intersections, we have some slides in the back that we'll bring up when, when Chief Cherry comes up to the microphone, so.
Okay.
Yeah, two quick things related to that. Last Friday afternoon, we had our regular, what we call the city-school collaborative, we have two members of the council, in this case, mayor and vice mayor, and then two members of the MUSD board, of the chair and the vice chair. And they, we met last Friday, this was one of the topics that came up. We mentioned that we would be having this discussion with the council tonight, that we would be proposing, one of the proposals would include reducing the number of crossing guards based on some studies had done, had been done. We didn't go the next step and say, ask, you know, directly ask the school board members who were there if they, if the school district might be interested in stepping up to cover the cost of those. The discussion, however, I thought there was a good question that was asked in response by Superintendent Jordan. They are aware that the city has received a grant for, and it's specifically for improvements at intersections for, to improve the safety of pedestrians and bicycles. So they asked us to look into that, if there's additional signage or lights or something that, as part of that grant, or other work that this city might do in those areas to, if we're removing crossing guards to enhance the safety through signage and other, other methods. I had a separate conversation, sort of informal conversation with Superintendent Jordan on the same topic prior to the meeting, but other than that, that's as far as our conversations have gone in that regard, directly with the school district.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Louz.
Thank you, Councilmember Leanne. Is there anyone else that have any comments? We have a Councilmember, we have Vice Mayor, Barbara Dill.
Can we go to slide eleven, please? So first thing, we did receive today, or yesterday, hiring frisk, and I think I was brief about this. And there were forty-two vacancies, twenty-three of them is in the pipeline, seventeen of them are funded. I think that's what.
All of them are funded.
All of them are funded.
All of them are funded. These are part of our four hundred and fifty-four approved FTEs.
All right. So where is, I am off it, man, forty-two minus twenty, where is the seventeen funded frozen positions reflected on this projection?
They are not reflected, because effectively, those are, there's a number of things that are not reflected, because we are going to come back and examine those more closely. But we wanted, the, today's goal was to meet the council brief, to effectively bring you a balanced budget. But we do have a number of areas that we are going to be providing you additional detail. The hiring freeze is our first one, and that, we provided some information on there, an estimated of roughly one million dollar savings if we held the positions that we are recommending to be held for the full four months. That freeze went into effect on April first. So we, if we held them all, absolutely, which I'm not going to say that we are, because some of those positions may very well need to be, just in order to meet our levels of service, may need to be recruited and filled. But we will be coming back, as explained in the memo, and this memo will also be posted online, so the public will be able to read this memorandum, along with our, any proposed materials that we put out there. But effectively, we did not kind of count that money, because that's sort of money we could tap into, but we don't. Other money that we are not including in the, if you could go, actually, this is, this slide is okay. Actually, no, if you could go to slide nine. If you notice, what we're not including here is an estimated one point five million that we expect on the natural breathing in and out of the organization with vacancies. So there's an additional one point five million that we expect to recognize in vacancy simply, simply because people leave the organization. We don't have the BART money, the eight hundred and fifty thousand that came back to us, that's not here. The Stratford money is not, the million dollars is not here. What also is not here is the Community Investment Fund, not here. Those are all one-time monies, but we wanted to be very careful on which revenues we tapped into to basically address this deficit. So those are all, I want to say, those are all additional places that we could conceivably go to fund any new proposals, but once again, we would bring those proposals to you, make some recommendations in the May timeframe, and have the council direct us on how, what additional work you want, what additional levels of service you want with the recommendation, with the proposed recommendations, and how you want us to fund it.
Right. So you hit it. You know, that's the reason why I asked these, and none included sources.
Absolutely.
Because I would want to know if, since we are so focused with twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, three point one, with two sources, one is a one-time and one is recurring, and, believe me, I have some issues with some of the recurring sources, is that is it prudent to do this now without considering the next five years? I'll go with your chart, the next five years, which is slide eleven. If you look, right, and it wouldn't be one point five, I'm sure of that, the recurring one, you put each and every fiscal year one point five, and that delayed the structural deficit in twenty-seven. So the real question is, is it really feasible? Because if we, if it will just be inevitable in twenty-seven, considering that this, we have some contract negotiations during, you know, these, these few years, if we don't incorporate future expected sources, whether it's one-time or recurring, which recurring is what we are trying to look after at, right, then that helps us decide whether having this temporary solution in twenty-five, twenty-six, with the studies going forward until the spring of twenty twenty-six, will be a good move and a good policy, because we will anticipate that we will live that twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight structural deficiency again, for a year or two at least.
Yeah. You will see a structural deficit again in FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that's a structural deficit. And that's exactly why we would be taking this next coming ten months in reviewing, once again, the perspective here is essential core baseline services, level of service, looking at the programs. So yes, this is a short, this is a short-term fix, but it buys us about a year and a half. So we can make judicious, first of all, that we can do a full and complete evaluation of projects and programs, and determines which go and which stay, with the, looking through the lens of what of these essential services, which we must do, but really, we'll be looking at baseline and core services and saying, which of these do we need to keep? And want to keep, because they affect the neediest of our community. And subsequently, some of those programs that the council will direct us to stop doing will have recurring expenditures, and by saying you no longer want us to do those services, the effect will be, those recurring expenditures will reduce our structural deficit.
Right, but that will be the end inevitable consequence of what we're trying to do now. You know, your projection that we'll have the, will delay at least the structural deficit by twenty-seven, twenty-eight are based on the data that we have used for projection.
Yes.
The only thing that you change in here is the recurring anticipated sources of one point five. What happened if we mess up on, on some figures that we have used, and we only have one point five, then this projection of structural deficit in twenty-seven, twenty-eight will happen next year? Let's say one of our groups asked, and we are so convinced that we provided them more than what we have budgeted as three percent across the board labor negotiations, when in fact, if you look at history, it hadn't happened that it's only three percent. And we know that its percent is about, what, three hundred, four hundred thousand, depending on department? So that's what I'm saying. So if we put real figures, and for now, we're so sure that we only have one point five in recurring sources, maybe we'll have a one-time later on, but let's not count that, would it be prudent to do it now? Because if we have the real figures next year, that two thousand seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight projection for structural will pull out again. This is what happened this year, right? Our anticipated structural deficit will be next year, but things happened, and it pulled out to this year. What can we do so that we don't repeat what had happened today? That we pull out one year, we pull backwards one year on our projection of the twenty-two, seven, twenty, twenty-eight structural deficit? What happens if we pull back next year? And then the deficit comes next year?
One thing I wanted to add to the conversation and point out that
One thing I wanted to add to the conversation and point out that Finance Director mentioned is that there, through the hiring freeze and then through just good, you know, other vacancy savings, we do hope, we are hoping for some extra funding to be available at the end of this fiscal year. That is also a safe, that is also prudent budgeting as a safeguard against, Vice Mayor, exactly what you're talking about. You know, we do the best we can. We have a great team estimating and forecasting, but you can never be perfect. And so having a little bit of money left at the end of this year that we can use to replenish our reserves in case that next fiscal year, we are off a little bit on our numbers, could hedge against that concern that you have. While we take this next six to nine months, as mentioned, as shown on slide 12, to figure out how to really solve our structural budget deficit. And through a good conversation with yourselves, the community, and our employees as well, to make sure that anything we stop doing in the future is really vetted very well with yourselves and our community and our employees before we make any big decisions on that.
I understand. I don't doubt staff's skills and knowledge on how we're trying to brainstorm. It's just that, you know, that's why I asked innocently, what's the value of those 27 FTEs? And if this council decides the whole 42? I asked that innocently because I thought, right? As you said, it may be factored in later on, but we don't have the value. So we, all I hear is we hope it will cover later on. But if, you know, we, again, I'm not a financial person, I'm just somebody logical, right? If we factored in the value of those employees that, you know, that are subject, I mean, those vacancies that are subjected to the freeze, then we know how much would it be? And then we can determine, because I told you during the briefing, if you want, my thing is across-the-board total freeze, right? But you have reason out, no, let's just keep all those from the pipelines and have the other vacancies, you know, not filled, right? But I told you, if you want to justify that policy, at least give us what is the importance of the 27 currently being recruited to our organization. So if we have those values, and I hope we have it now, not on these days, but you have it, so that you can project '27, '26, '27, and '27, '28 incorporated. But because if without that, we wait until spring to look at it, it may be too late. As I said, what happens if we have a repeat, one-year backwards poll on your projection of '27, '28?
So we have done, especially this year, we have done an extensive look, especially about salaries and benefits, simply because we, to be blunt, triple-confirmed them, to make sure that we had the right salaries, the right position numbers, the right people, the right benefit structure, and the right projection into the future as far as any increases, any benefits increases such as longevity came into play. So we have looked very, very closely on that. We will be coming back to you on a monthly basis to provide you information on these freezes. Some of these positions, however, we recommend must be filled simply because without them, the basic level of service for the city would be deeply affected. As you all know, I am not comfortable calling out individual positions. We can share those in private briefings. But our position is, is that it's an administrative function for the city manager and the city manager's office to determine, given the levels of service that we have been, that we have promised, we have committed to the community to deliver in this year and next year, that there are some positions that need to be filled. Some of them, I got to be honest with you, probably will be held long-term and maybe eventually go away, which would improve our recurring, our structural deficit. But we need to evaluate those, and we can't, those kinds of decisions, it's not a position going away. It's something that, that level, the work portfolio, the level of service that is attached to that position has to be examined, and that's a decision that the city manager can make a recommendation. But at the end of the day, it's a decision that comes from the council.
No, my fear is, and what pains me is what happens if at that time, if we don't do it right now, it's inevitable that we're going to cut people. That's a possibility, right? We're talking about, hey, we will prior and look at the services, and first, we do the programs and stuff like that. But that will be the disaster if we don't address things right now. We don't put solid, at least dependable figures now on our projection. That will be something that is inevitable. Look at Oakland, look at the other cities, right? And I hope, I mean, I know that they do have talented staff too. It's just that, you know, sometimes it just becomes inevitable. And that's what we're trying to avoid. That's why I said, you know, I'm maybe not in between on this one. It's either we do it now, or, you know, if there's a calculable risk that, you know, we can see and wait until '27, '28 to make further decision, which to me at this point is lacking, then maybe we'll do that. So we just need more explanation, how sure we are, although there's nothing that's sure in this financial world, that yes, we can at least preserve it, preserve the start of the structural deficit in '27, '28. Here are the measures. Here are the measures, here are the dependable measures that guarantees us that next year, it will not be pulled backwards and will be in the same situation.
So if you could put up the 12, please. We, oh, yeah, we are in April. We're going to come back to you in May with any new proposals, which, once again, you can say yes or no to. Okay? We would provide you recommend funds. There are good reasons to have, to recommend one-time use of funds. And generally, it's one-to-one. One-time hit on the expenditure side, one-time hit on the revenue side. Those are good reasons. But for example, a very good reason to spend one-time funds is to update your business tax system. I believe you have the lowest business tax prices in the Bay Area. I can't find anybody who's less than you. We are also in the middle of looking at our fees. That's a comprehensive fee study that we, that's also not included in here. That's also recurring. We would have to bring those back to you. But once again, we're starting to look at that work starting one month from now. So I can't, I would never sit here and say I can guarantee every single dollar. But those numbers that we have on slide nine are pretty good because we are at this point in the year and looking forward. Now, if something dramatic happens at the federal level, I can't speak to that. We'd all be in the same boat, which isn't great. But once again, this council has been conservative and put aside specifically for the purpose of one-time use. Your budget funds and your budget instability funds and your contingency reserves. These are, those, there are places to use that and use that conservatively. But again, we would bring that back to council to discuss.
Okay, thank you. So we'll have another one in May.
You'll have a lot of these sessions.
And hopefully, in May, next month, we have figures as to realistic numbers on our possible contracts in the next year or two, at least a feasible number.
So the plan, if I could, yeah, I'm going to expand a little bit further on the plan. There are particular areas that we've started to examine closely. So one of them is a hiring freeze, and you've received that. One of them is also overtime. We've got a five-year look back. We're going to be looking at that and working with our directors to go through that. Another one of them is our contracts. We have lots of contracts that are tying up money, and they're not in use. I have one for 25,000 that I have no idea what it's for. So again, but all these things and back, I hate beating up poor KJ to our financial system, but it's just not, we just don't have accurate data. So we're sitting here doing a lot of this examination and analysis by hand. But you will get some sort of study session or mini-study sessions on those major areas. And so after that, we will also start looking programmatically, because that's what you want to do. You really want to look at programs. You want to look at large categories like overtime, you know, hiring freeze, potential early retirements, if we can make them work. I've never done it in a municipality, I have done it in corporate. You know, there's lots of approaches that you can take that can address the recurring stuff. But we want to do it in a paced fashion that does not hurt the neediest of our community, which means we need to bring you good data, clean data, and provide you with good recommendations. And that takes time.
Okay, so hopefully, those three things, overtime, there's...
Overtime, contracts, hiring freeze. We went over the, we went over the replacement schedule for computers. I'm calling out the things that we're examining.
Those three, I'm interested on that. So if we can have at least some feasible numbers in May about those and, you know, that we can categorize whether it's in the recurring side or one-time.
Yeah.
And then maybe we'll have...
So you'll get similar presentations to this at a high level, so you can decide. I can't guarantee to you that we're going to have all that stuff. I've got people looking at city manager, would you like to give the count of contracts that we have? 1,1600 contracts that we have, we have to really make sure, confirm? And we're going to do confirm those because there are balances left on those contracts. But again, those take times because of our antiquated systems.
Understood. We've been hearing it takes time ever since we started this, and I respect that. Okay, then I'll wait for May, but one more thing on the, if you look at the pie chart on the whole budget, I think it's 9% is going back to the community. The whole budget, 9% or 16%, you know, some things may, is it, the pie chart?
Yeah.
Anyway, the community is getting back a minimal percentage of the whole budget. That's my point, right? And when I look at the recurring ones, most of them are community benefits. So I might have issues, for example, I'll be honest, you know, the appreciation dinner for commissioners, that's the only, you know, opportunity that we can thank our commissioners. And I don't know if, you know, at least on my one thought, that's something that, you know, since to be important to the community. And the others, recreation, and I forgot the list. But if you look at those cuts to produce this recurring amount, most of them benefits the community.
And the operating budget?
Yes, the one that, on the side of the 1.5 million, the item is...
Can we bring that up, please? Slide 10, please.
This one.
Vice Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Right, so it seems that July 4 event, you know, this is for the community, I mean, even if I close my eyes, most of it, and then point my finger at one, it's mostly going to benefit, it's a benefit from, to the community, right? So that's my issue on this one. How come we're, they already have a smaller percentage of the whole budget going back to them directly? You know, you can argue with me that, hey, the streets are fine. But what I'm saying, that they can fill right away. And we're still cutting their share on this proposed expenditure reduction. So that's my point there. Then one more, before I forget, crossing guards. We did have a meeting, collaborative meeting with the school district. So if ever we decide to reduce the intersections and thus reduce the crossing guards, I think, I believe, I find on that meeting that since it's been an intersection that has been used by students and the community before, at least replace it with something less expensive than crossing guards. Put some pedestrian lights maybe, you know? If we do remove them on our budget, because students, community already is so accustomed and crossing those intersections. And if we remove crossing guards, at least put something to replace. So those are my thoughts, and I'm fine, okay? I can wait until May, but hopefully, we have more data to support and convince ourselves that, yes, we can delay the structural deficit in 2027, 2028, and it's worth a try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at screen 10, and I see that youth scholarship, that's for the residents. The fee waiver donation is when they ask for waiver, is that right? The waiver for, when they do events, that's community. Holiday lights, I could agree, because this was explained to me that it's the lights behind the, not the front light, the Christmas light on the front, but the side. I could agree with that. Seasonal maintenance worker, it's been briefed to me that these are seasonal and our staff can take over. Is that correct, Director Christian?
I did, and as, no, go ahead, come on up. But as he's walking up, I did indicate in my explanation, this would reduce the frequency of the maintenance in certain locations during, but Christian can add.
Yes, we have four seasonals right now, and the idea, the proposal is to reduce two of those four seasonals. So we would come, we would have a bare-bones, seasonal is a supplement workforce for us. Obviously, they have time constraints throughout the year. Their functions are predominantly early morning, opening the restrooms at our park facilities, and also supplementing when we have either staffing shortages or exceptional demands for, you know, vegetation management during the, you know, spring and summer times. So obviously, none of these are ideal, but, you know, we feel that we could operate, continuously to operate our functions, activities, having two seasonals only.
Okay, well, okay, thanks. Thank you, Director Christian. July 4, that's the only thing that our residents get together and enjoy Independence Day. I won't go for that. Recreational swimming, I get feedback from, I know this 9,000 will cut down on the number of hours. I don't agree with that because feedback from the seniors, they really come to the Milpita Sports Center, and it's not just swimming, it's really for some ailments or some physical therapy for them. $9,000, I, no. I see like building safety inspector. I spoke briefly with Director Bill, and I see the point. So, yes. State of the city. It's an abbreviated celebration, that's okay. And porter service, I've been briefed that we really do not use this function. So it's okay for me. And this one, I agree with Vice Mayor. Commissioner dinner, it's the only time that we acknowledge and recognize the work of our commissioners. They come every month, you know, give us feedback, advises the council. I think, no, I don't want to remove that. Housing admin support, it depends.
That's actually a technical correction that we're actually going to do anyway. That, that's a technical correction. That, that's a technical correction. That person, the, that particular position was fun, is a 100% housing department, Office of Housing Support person. That person was inexplicably charged to general, to the general fund. When those responsibilities are actually for other, fall under designated funds.
Where do you get your source to the housing fund?
The various different sources we get, some for fees from development, some from the state. And there's various different sources of money that goes to fund our housing team. And anybody who's working on housing, it's ideal for us to fund them out of those sources of funding as opposed to our general fund.
And how much is in that fund bucket?
We can follow back up with that information.
But if there is a.
There is sufficient, but we will, we will follow back up with informational memorandum to.
And you need to explain what, what is it for? Fire miscellaneous, I don't know what this is.
While the chief's coming up, Councilwoman Ruchua, I wanted to see if, on the recreational swim, I wanted to, if okay with you, oh, on the recreational swim, I wanted, if okay with you, after the chief is done, ask Director Lorenzen to share more details on that proposal just to make sure that the councils, I worded it correctly.
What is this miscellaneous baseline 62 and core 15?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So when we went through this exercise to go through our budget and identify any areas where we could give some money back, we looked at all six functional divisions in the fire department, and we identified roughly $15,000. What we did is we took a small amount out of each individual program under each division. So no one program was significantly impacted. So examples would be everything from office supplies. There was a couple thousand dollars out of the OEM budget, a couple thousand dollars out of the training budget. I will share that before we went through this, we did look at historical expenditure trends in the fire department to make sure that we were making the appropriate decisions, and we felt comfortable that we could give this money back without significantly impacting any one division in the department.
Okay, thank you. So the office assistant, is that you two?
Yes, so the office assistant, this was a, this was actually a less than part-time position that existed in the fire department for several years. Specifically, they dealt with CalCard reconciliations and payroll. Probably about five or six years ago, that individual that had been with the department for years in that function retired, and we weren't sure if we would be able to manage their workload with our existing staff, but we thought it'd be prudent to try. And that's what we've done in the last couple of years, is we found that we were able to perform those functions with existing staff, and we felt comfortable giving that position and the money allocated for it back.
Okay, thank you. Director Lorenz.
Good evening. Just a clarification on the recreation swim. That is not the water aerobics or lap swimming classes that are most highly populated by the senior community. Those are about eight weeks of drop-in swim play. That is when school is out of session.
Oh. Still, that's for the residents. Okay, thank you. I would like to keep that as well. And it's your turn, Chief Gerard. You thought you got away, right? Tough luck.
Chief, if needed, you can ask Jessica to call up the presentation.
I got papers, I'm ready. What are you gonna ask me?
It's your slide.
Oh, they're already up there. I thought you were going to ask a question first. Okay, so I'll just throw this into summary. We, as a city, are not required to provide crossing guards at all. But we do as a community benefit and to promote vehicular pedestrian safety to and from school in the morning and in the afternoon. In 2006, council established a criteria where they wanted to utilize the pedestrian vehicle count surveys. It's a standard set by the state. They wanted to utilize that criteria to identify locations where they would want guards. Council also decided that there's two other circumstances where we could implement guard service. It was through council direction or through the chief of police recognizing a traffic safety need. So if we wanted to reduce our traffic guard program to the minimal locations identified through the pedestrian count surveys, we could reduce the program to just 21 intersections, which would require 29 guards, resulting in just under $200,000 in savings. There's alternatives, and I'll ask you to go to the next slide, please. Just so you can understand the intersections that we're talking about, where the criteria by the state says that a crossing guard would not be recommended utilizing their criteria. These are the locations there. It's broken down by school and then intersection within the area of the school. You'll notice that some of those intersections, we would consider just as residents of Milpitas, major traffic thoroughfares. All of these locations have some sort of traffic control device there, whether it be a lighted traffic control signal, a four-way stop, or a through-stop. So there's not a single location that doesn't meet the criteria, that doesn't have some alternate traffic control measure already in place. If we were to reduce the program to a smaller size, I think the commitment from the police department and from Public Works would be to identify potential areas where we could enhance visibility, whether it be signage, lights, or whatever, and that would be a case-by-case basis. That, of course, would result in a one-time cost for whatever signs or lights that we install in those intersections. The criteria that they use for pedestrian count depends on the type of intersection it is. So a lighted intersection would be in the high-peak hour, 40 pedestrians, and 300 vehicles. So that's why you see some of these intersections that might be major, but they don't meet those thresholds. Just a random example of one, Park Victoria in Etzel. Remember 40 is the threshold where the recommendation comes from? When they did the last survey, which was 2022, between the hour of 7:45 and 8:45, only three pedestrians crossed, nowhere near the 40, even though it's a midget roadway. So that would be one of them that you see on the list where it wouldn't meet the criteria. Next slide, please. it's my opinion that there's two ways to provide service and reduce costs, but it would require cooperation with the Milpitas Unified School District. That could either be through cost sharing, or it could be through person. So providing assistance in the form of staffing. When I was young and going to Curtin Elementary School, there were teachers that would help cross on the streets that were adjacent to the school. So right on Redwood, there would be a teacher out there with a stop sign, not a police officer, and not a paid crossing guard. So there could be room for conversation with MUSD to provide teacher crossing at adjacent locations to schools. And for fun, because I have nothing better to do with my time, I created the adjacent schools' intersections here. And so that could be another conversation that could help reduce the overall cost of the crossing guard program, but continue to maintain the service level that I think collectively, we and Milpitas Unified School District would want to provide to our Milpitas families.
My initial thought on this is to not reduce any for now and continue the conversation with MUSD, and at least get some commitment, maybe alleviate some of the areas that they can take over. They can, I think we have a couple months before, before, maybe six weeks before final budget, and I would like to table this until the conversation is done with MUSD. That's my personal thought.
I understand. I think that it's councils, this is a decision for council.
Exactly.
And I think that it's prudent to explore options before reducing services. The contract with our current provider expires in June. So we will need time to put a new place in contract, whether it's for maintaining the existing program or a reduced version of the program. So that's just something to keep in mind. But I do think that there's, there's time for conversations that would involve beyond myself. It would probably be, you know, risk management, the city manager's office.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
So that's an action item, I think, for this conversation.
So if I may, is the council open? This is quite, frankly, these are the kind of discussions we should be having. We're looking at it from a level of service, because that is, to reduce the crossing guards would be a reduction in level of the service. Would the council be open in this particular case to an analog solution, such as Christian was discussing? In other words, if we could substitute out crossing guards with lights and appropriate safety streets measures? And maybe we could, because I think frankly, to be blunt and candid here, a conversation with MUSD, they were very, they were very clear that they also, like many other municipalities or local governments, are.
Did you give her, did you give her your mic?
No. Oh, better? This is better?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. If we could solve it in technology or some safety streets, perhaps it's also a way of doing it, because that would be a one-time cost. Obviously, there is some maintenance cost, but we'd like to perhaps bring that as well. So the way that you approach these level of service solutions is basically say, no, we don't want to get, no, we don't want to lose it, but how can we replace it in a way that we can recognize some, have some efficiencies? And so there are lots of ways to skin the proverbial cat. But this is, this conversation that we're having right now is very helpful. We're getting definitive direction from the council. This is a service from one council member, of course.
Better.
It is quite helpful, but again, these things take time to look at and look at them well and bring you.
We have June 30th.
If that's on this particular, well, yeah.
Before.
Before June 30th.
So the task force, I would think, it would be yourself and Daniel and, I don't know, you, I mean.
Well, we'll get it figured out among city staff. There are six intersections, just so councils are aware. There are six intersections where it's less than 10 people that cross at those intersections, and we're putting a crossing guard there for the hour and a half in the morning, and then the hour and a half in the afternoon. But because if you remember from our presentation in 2022, there's a split shift rule in the state of California, so they actually get paid for three hours, even though they're only physically there for less time. So we're paying a significant amount of money, at least in six places, to cross just a handful of students. That might be a very good candidate for what Director Luce is talking about, where we utilize technology as a better option, but we're still providing a level of service to our community and safety.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that would be action items, one of the action items. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Director Luce.
Before I step away, was there any other council member questions on crossing guards?
Anybody else, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to follow up on that when, you know, you probably know I'm a retired school teacher, elementary school, and we had adjunct duties. That was part of our job, for us to be out there, you know, crossing the kids. And so I'm just surprised why MUSD doesn't have that.
Those decisions were before us in the 70s. That's how it was. I was in, obviously, in an elementary school in the 80s, and that's how it was. And somewhere in our history, it evolved to something different.
I do like that idea about teachers crossing the kids, and I don't know if they, if, who would pay for that? Would be, are you saying the city would pay for, like, hourly?
I'm not suggesting that. My suggestion would be a partnership and a culture of we, where they also participate in that.
Yeah, that's the we, shared cost. So I get it. So yeah, I really concur with Councilwoman Ruchua to hash it out and really discuss it with the school district and see how we can come up with a good solution, a we approach, you know. So that's great.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
On my next point, Mayor, I have one last one. In order, this is a comment from me. In order to address this as a council, this deficit, we have different areas that were discussed already. We need to know the vacancies, of course. We need to know the contracts.
I'm sorry, I missed what the word you just said. Vacancies, thank you, thank you.
Vacancies, contracts. Contracts, we can look at all the contracts and decide which contracts can we, can we just forget legally, if we can? Which contracts can, can, we can negotiate the cost, the amount? Which contracts are done, and which contracts do we want to continue? These are all in line with, with the direction of the council. And also freezing, freezing hiring is one of the areas that we need to know in order to address the deficit. Also, like we said, we all know services. What services, as a council, we have to decide, and we have to have that, the nerve or the courage to decide which, which services can we, can we eliminate or postpone or continue? These are all areas that, that we can tap on and address the deficit. We cannot let the deficit just stare on us for the next five years. We need to do something. Another way is attrition. We need to look at attrition. We know who's retiring, you know, look into that. And, and the taxes we have addressed. But we need this information to make decisions. And I know it's been said to us several times when we asked for, what are, what do we have in terms of contracts? If we don't have the manpower, let's hire a temporary and do the spreadsheet. Each, I could call on any of directors. They would know which contracts they have. I can be assured of that. What contracts do you have?
We have put together a draft list that we will be distributing to the, we have put together a.
He can't hear you from here, I'm sorry.
It's like a karaoke machine, but a bad one that you heard. Okay. We have a draft listing that we're going through now for the third time, because we want to give the, essentially, we have a system of record. Our financial system of record says this is what we owe folks. And so, and then we have another listing of contracts. We are putting that listing together so we can give the directors good information so they can tell us what needs to be done with those. But I would not, and I'm not, I think it would be very challenging for the directors to put together a complete list. For example, in my particular case, there was something that, that's five years old that I don't know anything about, that I'm closing. Again, we're looking at the entirety of the data. And as I've said before, the data is dirty. So we have a list, and we are working on that. But everything, again, takes time. I don't like, I don't, we don't want to give you sloppy work, to be blunt. But we also don't want the perfect to get in the way of the good.
If that's an issue, go with the highest amount.
That's, that's.
And forget the rest. Give me the top five, if you have it.
That's what we're doing. We're doing it exactly in that methodology. And so we will be providing, we will be distributing those lists.
Please hire somebody temporarily to address this.
We have temporary staff.
Because we need this information to make the decisions. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruchua. Is there anyone else that would like to make any more comments? We have a council member, Lam.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Our, our city budget annually is about 245 million, about 250 million. And then if I look at this presentation, you're trying to cut about one and a half million, which is about half a percent of what the total budget is. And it happens majority of the cuts on this 1.5 million benefit our residents and they are the one who pay the tax. I'm a little bit sad, a bit sad about, we are trying to cut the people who paying the bill and they are not gaining the benefits. Yeah, we should, we are generous on other stuff like paying a very high price for the contractors. For example, we, the other day, we looked at the innovation area. We pay contractor for designing a logo which we, we didn't even like. I don't know. We are spending so much money on something. It turns out to be wasteful. I think we really need to look at what are the things we want to save money on, not to cut the, some of the important things like the dinner for the commissioners. They's been, they are volunteer for us for the whole year and they got nothing out of it and we are cutting their dinner.
If, if I may, if I may, I can make a couple of points. The funds that we're talking about is actually our general fund, not the entire 250 because the remaining of that 100 is what's called enterprise funds or particular special purpose funds, for lack of a better generic term, that have a purpose that balance themselves. Basically, revenues equal expenditures in those individual funds. So that's, so we're at 150, 145, 150. So, but the, but I do want to explain to folks, this is, this is the purpose of having these meetings, to bring these to frankly, take the temperature of the council. So we, again, didn't have a lot of time to put this together. And, and, and I realize everybody says that's an excuse, but it's a realistic excuse. So, and if you want good presentations, it's going to take time because we have to look at that contract. Does that contract provide value? We may be able to see that have value, but if the council doesn't, then you tell us to stop it. I also want to say that we don't have many long-term contracts. So this is also like a two to five-year fix. So this will address some of the issues, but to be honest with you, where we have to start looking at levers to pull, we don't have a lot of levers, is on the revenue side. And then on the recurring expenditures, look at the core, the, the essential programs that we want to keep and then look at the core and, and core and baseline ones that we, that we're, well, the essential ones we are required to keep, but take a good hard look at the base and a good baseline ones and a good hard look at the core. But at the end of the day, we have to find other sources of revenues. Unfortunately, that's what it is.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. So I have a few comments to mention as well. So I remember when this city had a surplus. I think it's been a long time when, it's been a while since we've had a surplus and I'm hoping that those days will come back again where this city has a surplus. I also agree with Councilmember Chua and Councilmember Lamb and Councilmember Barbara Diouf. It seems that the community is the one that's getting the short end of the stick. You know, it's like the totem pole and the people on the bottom are the ones that we're cutting. You know, I'd like to see on the top because we need to, the key is to reduce cost and to bring in revenues. That's how we can switch this around and that's where we really need to focus, reducing costs and bringing in those revenues. And that means economic development in the city, bringing in some businesses to bring in that, those revenues. So again, to me, what's happening is that they're cutting, you're cutting the cost to the community where the community is having that, that visible impacts, that visible indirect, visible direct impacts. I don't want to cut public works because that's what people see. That's what people, they, when they see the roads paved, when they see the potholes being taken care of, when they see the landscaping, they really appreciate that. So the boots on the ground with public works is really important to me. They're the ones that make this city shine and I, I don't want to cut. So can you go back to slide 10? And that's, again, the holiday lights, I think, so Councilmember Chua, you said that, you said something about the holiday lights on the side, but it's the tree, it's, no, it's the trees, the pine trees, that's what they're referring to. They're referring not to the lights on the side.
So, so to clarify, this would, the lights and, the lights on the trees in front of City Hall are the ones that cost the $87,000 a year. Everything behind City Hall and the plaza, the, the holiday tree and the other decorations and the lights behind City Hall, between City Hall and the community center would not be impacted, but these would be the lights in front of City Hall.
That's the 87.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's the tree. It's the trees, that, that's what's cost the 87 grand. So just to, just to make that, just to make that clear. I won't go into these because the time is already 8:14, but I want to see if anyone else has any comments. And we have Councilmember, Vice Mayor Barbara Diouf.
I'll, I'll, I'll be blunt too, right? There will only be two things on my one vote. It's either wait or we'll pull the trigger right away. You know, we have, it seems that we will be exhausting all the, the lever, as you said, right? The sources of, of revenue. Well, we have 10 departments. Maybe let's start looking, you know? I hate to say that, that may be the last, but if we don't have any lever to, to pull at some point and it's going to be inevitable, then I, I would be willing to do that. I will.
Okay, we have Councilmember Leanne.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to also bring to Director Luz that this number will be much different starting mid-April. Mind you that we have the recruitment that's going on for the interim city manager and then the city manager. So for you guys to wanting to find all these on here, only if we have this before the meeting yesterday, then you would know what to vote on. So that's just my comment, thank you.
We have a comment from the city manager.
This is just a suggestion for the council to consider. So looking at this list, the larger items include staffing. So we have the building inspector is a large, a big ticket item and the fire prevention inspector, a big ticket item. And if you add to that, the, I think it was the day porter service and administrative support, all of that adds up to about, by my calculation, roughly 65% of this. Though, those are items that it sounded like there may be consensus around that. If, if the council can give some direction on those larger items that sound like they're not too controversial, there may be one or two others that would fit in that category. And then I, I think what I've heard is that the other items the council is not comfortable with, this is, this is kind of like a puzzle. So this is just one suggestion. If some of these smaller items the council is not comfortable with, we can go back to the drawing board essentially, remove those, keep, keep the large ticket items that are, again, 65, 70% of this, take the smaller items off and we could look at other ways that, that, and, and continue to have conversations with the council around items that you would be comfortable with. That, that way, we're kind of half and half. We, we would have a, a good core of, we'll call them reductions that we could move forward with and then we would need to look for other areas that would be more palatable to the council if that would work. That's one strategy I would propose.
So we have two more study sessions, right?
We, yeah, we can have as many as you need.
We have Councilmember Chua. Just to remove some items so it will not be discussed later on. If, I mean, this is the, obviously with the consensus of the council, I would suggest the, where's that, the big ticket item, I'm, the building safety inspector, 224. Where's the other one? Oh, here. The fire, no, the housing has its own source of ones. Yeah, fire prevention inspector, 354.
And then the other staffing item on there is the seasonal maintenance workers. It's only 60,000, but they're, they are on there.
Is that okay with Director Christian? Are you absolutely okay with it?
Well, it's not okay with me because I think those are.
That's what I'm saying.
The, another large item is the day porters.
Oh, the day porter service.
Pardon?
The day porters that provide janitorial service during the day from about 6 o'clock in the morning to 3:30.
That's 99,000 somewhere.
Yeah.
I, I will keep the seasonal maintenance worker because that's for the residents. And those three.
Right, and then the other thing I heard was to, to continue the conversation with crossing guards or engage in a conversation with MUSD over that. We have some other smaller items.
I'm sorry, I think the Chief Jared said the fire is okay for, for the 77 and the office assistant for 15. Is that okay? I mean, Jason, I always call him Jared. Yeah, you got that. Is that okay?
So just for clarification, council member, which specific position are you referring to? Is it the fire prevention inspector?
Miscellaneous and the office assistant.
Miscellaneous and office assistant.
That right? Okay, so we can take that off the table then.
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay, right?
In terms of our, our signaling that we can reduce those positions?
Right.
Yes.
So we're taking it off the table to say we agree?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did that. The, okay, can, can you please review?
I'm going through it now.
City manager, I just want to make sure I got everything.
Hang on, I'm running a total now.
Yeah, we can, we can just go down the list.
Okay.
So starting at the top, what I heard is, and they're relatively small, it's the youth scholarship and the fee waivers, maybe.
We're keeping.
Maintain those. Holiday, holiday lights, keep that. Seasonal maintenance workers, what did you decide on?
We keep, we're keeping that.
July 4th, keep, and then the recreational swim.
We keep.
So all of those, that, that 310, then we would need to make up somewhere else. The building inspector, that would stay on the list.
It would go.
Yeah, it would go. And the state of the city, that's a relatively small amount.
Yeah, that's fine.
The day porter service would go.
That would go.
Missioners dinner, keep. Administrative support, that's, that's a housekeeping item, so we'll just move that over to the housing fund. And then according to the fire chief miscellaneous and the office assistant would.
Would go.
Would go.
Up to them.
Fire prevention inspector would go and the crossing guards, that's an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that, that's very helpful, is that?
Could I just clarify? I think per what City Manager Thomas said, the crossing guards is an ongoing discussion. I just want to clarify the words that City Manager used, so it's, it's.
I mean.
Yeah, we'll keep it on the list.
Discussion with council on the cross. So you're, I think, what I heard is council is open to future discussions on the crossing guard when we come back that, with the information that you requested.
Right. Okay. It's ongoing discussions.
Yeah, so what we'll need to come back with is that, the, some report on our conversations with the crossing guards and then we will need to look at other ways to make up the difference for the items that have been kept on, that, that we're going to keep.
It's roughly around 1 million.
Yeah.
If I got everybody right, it's roughly around 1 million in reductions at the council in general. Once again, there needs to be.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
No, it's me. There's roughly 1 million that, and I did a run account of, of these things and it's the building inspector, the day porter service, the administrative support. That's the housing one, we will get you those numbers, but those really do need to be transferred to housing because that portfolio does belong to housing. The miscellaneous fire, the office assistant in fire, the fire prevention inspector, that adds up to roughly 1 million. And so everything else we're going to assume, we still need some sort of consensus vote on that, I believe.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Well, this is feedback.
You do not, you do not need a, you do not need a motion, this is feedback to staff. If you wanted to take a consensus vote, so staff could know if that proposal meets a majority consensus of the council, that might be helpful.
Let's do a consensus vote, starting with Councilmember Lamb.
I'll follow up. The, the consensus starts with Vice Mayor Barbara Diouf.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye.
And if I could, Mayor, if I, if I don't mind, just real quick, what, so what, what a next step would be, a number of next steps, but in summary, of the one and a half million in reductions, about, about a million seem to have consensus with the city council and so we'll be working on identifying another half million before we come back to you for other suggestions.
And we're planning to come back May 6th.
Okay, yeah, if you can listen to our recommendations and our comments, thank you. All right, is that it then?
Yeah, I believe that's it.
Mayor, I understood you wanted to take public comment again.
Oh, actually, I'm going to open a public comment for folks that were here that missed out on the public comment session, so a public comment is open.
Yeah, where's the mayor?
Welcome.
Hello there, Officer Clint Jackman, member of the Milpitas Police Department representing city employees here. I first want to applaud the city council for its commitment to providing public services. I heard many statements reiterating the need to give the money back to the community and as a city employee, I think it's very important that we consider the fact that every dollar spent on paying our employees and pretty much making the city run is in fact giving the money back to the community. The city is by its very nature a nonprofit and so while we're looking at this list of services that may be potentially cut, we do need to remind ourselves that as a city, the act of existing is providing the community. And so I applaud the city for trying to maintain its level of service. I did want to just address the issue with the transient population tax. I understand that the Super Bowl and FIFA World Cup are approaching and I think we can easily look back 10 years and see, and we can see how that affected occupancy for that period of time. And so while it pays to be conservative, we can also project, okay, we expect X amount of rooms to be filled and that additional revenue to be generated. Because I think we can all agree, revenue would be great. And so moving forward over the course of the next couple of months, exploring additional revenue options, sorry, would be key because cutting costs is one thing, generating revenue is an important public safety thing. And I think overall, the city would love to see us providing additional services on behalf of getting money into the city. So I would just recommend additional revenue streams. Finally, regarding vacancy savings, the police department is hit, I think, harder than any other department regarding vacancies. And I would just regret to see positions being frozen just to balance the budget. I think, well, it would be hard to fill those positions, we don't want to just say we. I think, while it would be hard to fill those positions, we don't want to just say we wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any public comments on any issue that is not on the agenda? Okay. And thank you for that. So now, uh, announcements and future agenda items from the consul and the city manager. Do you have any?
Just one quick announcement. This is my last council meeting here tonight. So I just want to thank the council publicly for the opportunity to serve as your city manager. It's been a wonderful experience. And I look forward to, um, watching all the great success as you continue, uh, with your new city manager. The executive team is here too, so thank you. You're a great team. And I appreciate your friendship and your, your support over the past year and a half and prior to that. So thank you very much. I'll miss you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from, uh, city council. We have, uh, William, do you have your? Okay. All right. I just want to say thank you, Ned, for all your hard work. And thank you for, um, making the city run well. I know that, um, the travel time was an issue. So, uh, but again, we appreciate everything that you've done. So thank you. And, and we have other comments from other council members?
I, I just want to thank, uh, city manager Ned and congratulations on your new gig, your new journey. I know you'll be very successful. And thank you from being the planning director, because I was a planning commissioner under you, I mean, in the same, in the same commission for many, many years. And now with the city council. So we've known each other for a long time. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.